Anyone that would like to address us or address the council, you can do so at the podium. Please give us your name and address please. So feel free to speak now.
My name is Terry Keller. Thank you for letting me speak before you. I would like to start out by saying that I love our first responders. I think they should not only get a fair wage, but a great wage. They deserve it for defending and saving the people of Kingsland. I'd like to thank them for all they've done through the years and especially after Hurricane Irma. Speaking of which, I live in Woodhaven. As you know, Woodhaven suffered some of the most devastating flooding in our fair city. While our house did not flood, our backyard had water that was almost two feet up the fence because the water got apparently filled the woods on the north side of where we live. This area between Woodhaven and the Meadows has been designated for many years for drainage. The same water unfortunately did flood the homes of many of our neighbors who lived in Woodhaven in the Meadows and later necessitated their ripping up their drywall and putting ruined belongings out on the curb. It was in continuous speed and not near for many of them. I would like to propose that the city of Kingsland hire certified drainage engineers to fix these drainage problems and that homeowners that may be impacted by the new plans be consulted before any fixes are done on or adjacent to their property. Any drainage-related changes that were planned before Hurricane Irma are now obviously, may no longer be viable, so all plans should be reviewed by professional engineers immediately before implementation is even pursued. For example, one of my neighbors on Woodhaven Drive says that during Hurricane Irma, he saw a raging river where before there was just grass rushing between his and his other neighbor's home on the west side. That water ended up flooding both their homes and many others down the street. There was previously a proposal to dig a ditch from the front of his yard on the east side of his home back to the woods to help reduce repeated flooding in his yard. But the water which flooded his home was coming from the woods. Will this new ditch just bring in a second raging river on the east side of his home, ruining his foundation and flooding his house even worse than before? And also making it worse for everyone down the line in every direction? This is why I believe that the city of Kingsland should hire certified drainage engineers who specialize in this type of work to figure out what is best for Woodhaven, Meadows, lakes, and every other area where there were flooded homes. And that they should confer with homeowners of impacted properties and neighboring homeowners to make sure all are aware of what the new and improved drainage plans will be. Please give us a heads up before going forward. We live in Kingsland because we like what it has to offer. That offering should include the reassurance that everything possible is being done to the fullest extent to make sure our properties are not in harm's way. And I know that that's what you want as well. Something to keep in mind, according to the University of North Carolina, one large tree can lift up to 100 gallons of water out of the ground and discharge it into the air a day. Let's keep as many healthy trees standing in our beautiful city as we safely can. Thank you, and I will revisit the topic we were working on before this happened, making the smart leader, smart board leader opt out totally free. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. An opportunity to speak. I'm Danny Daniels, 247 Miller Drive, in Florida. I thought we were speaking primarily about the proposed tax, and that's what I'd like to address. As a former fire chief for the county for 25 years, I'm not aware of the issues and consequences involved in running public safety, whether it be fire, police, rescue. It's very unfortunate that the equipment for fire service is so extremely expensive. A new hook and ladder costs about $1.8 million. A proper manufacturer to equip fire engines is about $1 to $1.2 million. I'm very proud that our fire chief Terry Smith has agreed along with Ronnie Wise, our street manager, to recondition both of those. They're tremendous savings to us and at the same time will provide the necessary protection that we need here in the city of Kings. Ladder three, it's got to be about 20, 21 years old, far, far exceeded its expectancy. As the mayor has said, they look really, really good from the inside, from the outside, excuse me, but the running gears, the ladders, the ability to re-certify those ladders is expensive and they need to be replaced. And I fully support the fact that, and agree with the fact of bringing manufacturing those, bringing that up to the standards. At the same time, I think we would be amiss if we didn't in some way dedicate some funding to be set aside on a periodic basis for replacement of equipment, whether it be fire, rescue, or law enforcement. Manpower is a huge issue in every fire department, in every police department in the United States. One reason is, is that lack of funding. It costs a lot of money for manpower. It does. But there are not very many people that are trained or willing to run into a house that's burning while other people are running out. And that's what you have with the firefighter. As far as law enforcement, it has to be the most dangerous job in the world. Incredible what they have to go through. I was really amazed when I went to talk to your finance director and found out that we're spending $150,000 to $175,000 a year. No, spending is the wrong word. We're wasting $150,000 to $175,000 a year because of retention problems in our police department. 3.2 men per year are leaving the Kingsland Police Department for one reason or another, whether it be salary, benefits, or just not melting into that system. As a citizen, it's imperative that we trust our police and that our police know that we trust them. In order for them to develop a team and have continuity, it requires retention of employees, not losing employees. As the mayor said, from the time a man starts the process of saying, "I want to be a Kingsland police officer," until the time he's released to ride on his own is over a year. He has to serve six months with a PTO, or PTO, excuse me. So just because we have six men coming out of the training academy now doesn't mean that we're going to have six new officers. No, we have a full training officer that has to watch after this rookie until he's fully certified. And guess what that does? That puts more strain on him, less ability to patrols. I'm not castigating you. I've been where you are as far as the busing process, too many years. But think about this. It's important that we provide and the citizens here understand that you're doing the best you can from manpower and equipment to service the citizens of Kingsland. It's a beautiful town. We have some issues that need to be addressed. I'm just going to throw a few about there right quick, not asking for funding today, of course. What are we doing about mitigating drug utilization in the city of Kingsland? What are we doing about child tornado and child molestation in the city of Kingsland? These are issues that our police department needs to be fully capable of taking care of and done on a daily basis. Think about those things. Think about how we can establish necessary funding as we continue to grow, as we continue to be the city that we want to be. And I support, my family supports, an increase that's proposed here tonight. And I thank you for the time.
Anyone else?
Mine's a question from, what I would like to locate on that now.
If I could get the ones that want to talk about the proposed village, then we'll be sure to answer.
I'm not sure if there's any of those left.
No, right here. My name is Weston Mills. I currently reside at 198 West Pine Ample, Kansas, Kingsland.
What is your name? I'm sorry.
198 West Pine Ample. It's formerly 550 Y. It's been recently changed. So it's fine. I'm not here to complain about that. In regard to the village, as you guys have stated, we're at a 14.94 overall increase regarding the taxation. We start off by saying that I support our law enforcement officers and fire department always have and always will. And you can bet the name that I would hire from the military and I'll be working for one of you guys. So believe me when I tell you, I appreciate what you do. I looked at the village requirements for the state of Georgia, however, and I noticed something. I've been doing some research on this topic in regards to higher overall property taxes increases. Again, I see around the county, and I personally have been around the county, and these very individuals who are in here complaining about them just do a kind of humble number out of the truck, you know, that's me. So when I say that I believe in you guys and we're here to support you at hand, so I look at the overall damage that I've seen this county personally. And I don't really understand how we can have a property tax increase while we have a property value decrease. So I want to be a real gentleman. I hate using paraphrase quotes any man in the comic book. Murray Rothbard put it very simply, "Taxation is an institution for theft." That's exactly what it is. And to apply otherwise is instituted instituting a fact that you guys, the individuals sitting before us right now, have the right to steal money from me and squander it how you see fit. I don't understand how that's possible when you have individuals in this room who just lost everything. As a matter of fact, I've seen Georgia state law, found on the matter states that this is contrary to. It's a violation thereof. It's actually against the policies. As a matter of fact, you're not supposed to have a village increase, and you guys say that this is a voluntary hearing here. By the state law, they're required to have this hearing. I just wanted you to know that. So you're talking about a property increase, let me, property tax increase, I mean, prephrase, a property theft increase, and yet here you sit with this property theft increase. And I'm looking at this whole fact, this gentleman right here pointed out a minute ago, that we have, it takes us $175,000 a year to retrain one police officer in this department. If you gave every single individual the worst of the police department, there's 42 people on staff, that's $4,200 a year increase in pay. I bet you get a little more retention with a pay increase, not a tax increase. Perhaps a benefits increase, equipment increase. We're talking about a fire department, not a fire department staff. You actually use the budget properly to retrain personnel. You could pay them an average of about $4,500 a year. That's a big difference. As a matter of fact, we look at the overall differences, you're talking about a $40 increase per property value for $100,000, $120 for $300,000. The average household value in the city of Kingsland is $175,000. So you can go ahead and take that, $75 increase per household. How many of you actually had your house damaged to the point that it exceeds $10,000? Did you know by Georgia state law that you're actually required, they're required to decrease your property taxes? Excuse me, that's national law, not Georgia state law. But we're talking about theft here, and that's exactly what we're engaged in. My wife and I sacrificed our life savings to move here. We gave everything to move here. Everything. She sacrificed an $80,000 a year job to come here because Kingsland, Georgia has opportunity, not security. Kingsland, Georgia allows people, allows the small businesses, they've always wanted to open. You go up to Seattle, Washington, or around those parts where we were located before we moved here, and they have a tax on diet and soda so that people who have a higher income can pay their fees. They have a tax on bullets. They have a tax on driving a pickup truck. How many people in this room drive a pickup truck? Can you imagine paying a difference in that? And yet here we sit talking about a property tax increase. And I know it seems so small, $40, maybe $75 for the average person in this room. It doesn't sound like a lot. But I'm concerned that a government would come here, stand in front of us and say, "For the betterment of this community, that we want to increase your taxes." My taxes have been increased three times since I've moved here, and I've lived here 16 months. Camden County just increased trash tax by 15 percent, and they cut trash tax spending. I'm the only one that thinks that's absurd. We triple our health and welfare benefit tax, our health and welfare benefit spending to the actual employees, which is interesting to me. I was reading about the overall budget of the city of Kingsland and the overall budget of Camden County government. You guys are getting a little bit angry here. It accounts for 3 percent, 3 percent to the people sitting right here in this room, and 3 percent to the councilman of the actual Camden County itself. That's 3 percent of the budget, the largest portion of the budget in terms of actual income go to the very people sitting right here in this room. Just so you know, that $175,000 in case a train wanted a police officer, two of them exceed that overall staff rate. Two of them. Not to mention benefits and retirement programs. It's theft. Money's best squandered by the individuals who sit in this room. The institution that sits before you is not an institution of government. It is, of course, a monopoly that steals your money and spends it how they see fit. And don't get me wrong, I'm not saying we should cut spending in the law enforcement. I'm saying that there are other avenues in which we can acquire funds. Increasing property taxes on recently dilapidated properties is not one thing for you.
Hey, I'm Cameron. I live at 117 Ritz-Hart Court.
I'm sorry, your name is Cameron?
Yes, Cameron. Luke, LA City. So when the millage rate came out, it was bad timing. We all know that. We can't foresee the weather, so it happened. So as we're reading it, it said that we're getting a 14-point something increase, which is misleading. So I'm wondering what our council and our city officials can do better to educate us on what we actually need. So I shouldn't have to get out my calculator and do all this research to find out, well, what is my tax rate right now, and then how much does 14 percent increase it to? So what can we do better to present it so that we don't have so many people angry over 14 percent? It looks like our rate is going up 14 to 14 percent. So I understand that we have to present it a certain way. That's the law. But what can you guys do better to educate us? So are we using our website? Right? So I go on our website, and I'm looking at the city of Kingsland, and I don't see anything about it. I don't see where it says this is going on. Am I wrong? Is it on there? Who runs our website? Any of you? No, I'm sorry. I don't have a place on this slide. It's not, it's not a pitchfork on this. I just want to know, is that on our website?
I'm not sure if we put that on our website.
So we should, because that's the point of our website. So what's going on is whenever, I'm a resident of Kingsland, it's happened since I bought my house in Kingsland. And so when I want to know something, I want to know where to go to get that information. So where's the best place for me to go to get the information about my tax rate, my city official? How do I get in touch with my city officials? Who's my city official? So when a natural disaster happens, where do I go to get the information to evacuate? How to evacuate? Where to evacuate? Can I come home? Can I not come home? So where is this information? And that's pertinent to this 14 percent increase. So it's not, so yeah, right, 14 percent, so I'm $40. But where did I go to get that information? How did I find out it was only $40? Well, I have general access to a councilman. It's very easy for me, but it's not easy for everyone else. It should be. We're in the technology age. Councilman Day does a very good job of keeping us up to date with, hey, this is what I see. This is where I am. Where are we? The city of Kingsland, we are so, so lucky. We have so many resources, but we're not using them. So why aren't we using them? Whose job is it to make sure they're being achieved? So who do I follow up with?
Our finance department.
Finance department. And who's that?
Our finance director's name is Melissa Marra.
Okay, so the finance department handles the website and releasing the information.
She talked to her about the number three.
Okay.
And they related that. Our IT department is in charge of the website. But it's that the department has to determine which information gets onto the website.
Okay, so are we saying that we don't publish the information on the website right now and that those people can handle, let's say, 1,000 calls a day? Let's just say hypothetically, we all get upset at the same time about it. So we can't look it up on our website, so we have to go somewhere. They can handle that many calls or emails a day?
They can do their best.
That's not gonna happen, because when we're evaluating.
We do not have a full-time webmaster.
Okay.
We have three people in our IT department that are responsible for keeping our information secure. So we don't have anybody that's specifically dedicated to maintaining the website.
Okay.
And obviously, I don't have that to be a full-time position either.
Okay, was that proposed in our budget to get someone to keep us up today, other than like on Facebook page? Because can we trust this? Okay, so does it not raise any concern that there's nowhere for us to go to get information accurately, quickly, efficiently?
Related specifically to the village increase, we can pick up the phone and call. As far as storm-related information, that was on the county's website. It was updated on the city's website.
Where? On the city's website. I was, I could find it on this.
Every time we got information through the emergency operations center, we transferred that exact information to the city's website.
To all of again. So we're saying that in order to better efficiently use the city's website, we need to hire someone full-time to do that?
I don't think that would be a good... I don't think that's a full-time position. I don't think that's the right way to tax it.
Okay, so then what's the best way to present these village increases so that we all understand it?
Well, it's been so long since we had one.
Well, this guy just said we got three in 16 months. Was that that?
Not a village, not a village. He's talking about property taxes. That's from the county assessors office. But we can't do a better job of... I think we have to ask for another increase the next time we take into consideration that.
Thank you for that. But we will look at that, as you said, with the technology today. We do try to operate and bring information, but in the citizen brings something like that that you know and we're not aware of, certainly we can make that happen. And I think that we'll make that happen so that there's more information out there. And we'll take what measures that we have to ensure that more information, that you all are concerned about, if you want to go on our website and find it, then that's what we should be doing to get this information out to you all. We did not get as much information out the last couple of weeks about a storm because we get our broadcasting out, Jackson and Florida. And at one time, the ambulance stations come over here because practically every official in this county, we all work together. The school superintendent and the base try to provide information. We give the TV station, we could not get that information out to you all. And I know it upset a lot of people because it upset people who only we contacted them. But with the information about the cities, finances, or any other information that you think that you'd like to steal, mayor, please contact us. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. My name is Joe Boyce, and I live in the high church of Robin Kingsland, sir. Good afternoon to the city staff and council. Today I have a question. First of all, with the increase in the taxes and everything else, our president started out his first week in office declining taxes to make our nation better, to make our communities better. I don't think paying anyone else by increasing taxes makes it fair on anyone. I agree that everyone should have a fair rate in pay and everything else. But my question to the state office and to the city of Kingsland is, for the first time in 52 years, I get to tell my family that I'm homeless. I get to, now, I spent all day long yesterday at the office with FEMA for them to tell me that now they've got to send an evaluator to my house to see if I'm eligible for another loan for the next 30 years. And I don't think that was my fault. I think that up until this point, I've paid my taxes enough that the city's street should be clean, the city ditch should be clean. And with respect to the county staff, I get home today to my beautiful house that I bought and wanted to raise my family, and I notice for the first time the six-and-a-half-foot grass that's been growing was cut.
That's right.
I do appreciate that. But I'm sure that a pilot would prefer to know that there's ice on the runway prior to landing on it. For the first time in my life, I get to explain to my grandson, four years old, you can't come to Poppy's house because I don't have one anymore. The whole inside of my house has been gutted, and not because of something I did or because of something I wanted to remodel. I was told it was the acts of somebody else in the city that engineered a certain route where the water came to my house. As I'm filling out the paperwork for FEMA, I'm told by one of the public officials, the city of Kingsland is going to give you 20 percent.
What?
20 percent of what, sir?
Well, it's a liability. Why do we offer all of this?
Is there a certain amount that we're going to be expecting to receive? Is there a certain amount that we should expect to receive from FEMA? As it is right now, I go down my street and to all of the public community that live there, you know, we talk each day and everything else. My whole entire street, my whole entire community is taking in insulation, bringing in drywall. We're not all scheduled to remodel our house at the same time. But due to acts that weren't on our part, now we have no other choice. So now we take our family savings since we're waiting on FEMA or the city of Kingsland or whoever else is going to offer us aid. And we start rebuilding, taking away from our children's college fund, taking savings out of our account that we've saved all of our life. Sometimes, Mr. Mayor, this seems almost like a scam. When the news breaks and put out a mandatory evacuation, but like they just stated, it views the taxes, they didn't announce mandatory evacuation because the last time, they had 134 deaths caused by the evacuation. I bought my house because I knew it was a no-flood zone. And I knew that it was going to be safety for my family. I knew that. I did all my homework until now, and now I'm speechless. And now I have questions to ask, Mr. Mayor, to the city. What's next? Am I looking forward to rebuild my home to lose it again? Am I looking forward to rebuild my home for FEMA or the government to come in and take it later? Or do you just recommend that I walk away from now? I have a good job. I have good educational benefits, and I have a good clearance. But depending on this, I could lose everything in one day. All I have to do is get one little advantage, and I've never been late on anything. I'm always making my house payment right on the front. My city taxes, they're taken out each year in November. But at the brink of one moment, I am looking at losing everything I've ever owned. How do you answer that? Is there a 20 percent? Is there a certain limit that we're looking to receive as assistance or aid from the city of Kingsland to help us rebuild our homes? Is there a certain limit that FEMA has set aside saying, "This is the cutoff. If your house costs $25,000 to rebuild, we're giving you $15,000, and you'll take out along with the other $15,000, or $10,000." Can you answer those from our four-year-old grandson? Mr. Mayor?
There is no amount of money that I know that the city has set aside to help FEMA in this situation. FEMA and June was supposed to come in. We have not been told exactly how much that they would fund to each family. We were not privileged to that information. And each family, what I have told, would receive a certain amount depending on the damage. But as far as them coming to us and telling us what was going to be, we have no knowledge of that. That's strictly through FEMA, but we would like to know. And I don't know whether to do it again or not, but I did get a call from Senator Wagan this afternoon and wanted to know if there was anything that he could do. afternoon, and wanted to know if there was anything that he could do, and told him I would be able to let him know after this hearing tonight, I don't know what he would do if we're doing it, but I certainly believe this information, and I think we have enough film coverage, and now that we can send to him, anyone else, because I think they, they should provide that for you all, and I think we should, you know, we'll be able to step up to the plate and contact whoever we can to help out, and I will do that.
The second question, Mr. Mayor, is that, uh, as I was being interviewed yesterday by FEMA and by SBA for a small business loan for the next thirty years, what are my plans to prevent this ever happen? I'm like, sir, with all due respect, I didn't cause this. How do I answer that?
I don't know how I'm going to receive this situation, it's the first time it's happened to this magnitude in Kingsland, and I've been here all my life practically, uh, but this is the worst one that we've ever had to our knowledge, and I've been here over several years, and this is the worst. I don't know how many more want to come, we can't predict that.
Right.
We, we, we have no knowledge. We worked with the National, uh, Weather Service prior to this situation taking place, we all met daily to try and find out, and even the weather bureau could not tell exactly what was going to take place or where it was going, but we tried to work as hard as we could to hit for it, and it still shifted, and that's why we did not get the full brunt of it. So we don't know how many more storms are out there, there's no way that the city of Kingsland can tell anyone how many more storms of a magnitude that they will come in here, there's just no way. We'll continue to work on trying to provide better drainage, we have two engineers in here tonight, and they are better near working and looking over the different floodplain maps, the drainage that we have, and we did not just start on this, we've been working on this for a long time. So, at, right now, until we can get further information from our, uh, consultant engineers, and it's not just one or two of them, but there is full staff that's working, trying to, uh, provide better drainage.
Yes, sir.
In our community.
We appreciate that, thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, what we're also doing too is, with these hurricanes coming, we have to make a less than a merrin report. In the military, we practice, practice, drill, 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 we have to say what if, and what we need to do in the city, our county, is have something in place, we can't wait on FEMA, we can't wait on GMA, we need to make our own thing, because I'm worried that the insurance company as well, because they did not come to, we're paying our money, if you're saying you shouldn't have flood, sure, it doesn't matter, we have to get these people, I think the gentleman said already about scams, we're not scammers, but I will say this, we don't put stuff in writing, and tell the insurance people that they need to only work with these policies, with GMA, FEMA, all those people, when they come in town, they need to be with the elected officials, say this is the process, we can eliminate stuff and have a town meeting, say this is what takes place, this is how it's done, because there's too many questions, we got Texas going on, we got Florida going, and leaving Georgia's number three, okay? We, like I say, we're talking more, but the thing is, we have to put it in writing, what I'm hearing from us is that something has got to be done, we know it's not going to happen overnight, we know that, but this has been going on for years and years, and our council is willing to step up and do that, we, we can take the lead, but we need to work together, come up with a plan, say, if this happens, we'll do this, if that happens, we'll do that, and again, if you take these things, and you hear the express yourself, uh, which is said about communication, spot on, we will work on that. Like I say, this is what we're here for, we work for you, and again, as, as the world is changing, communication is getting more difficult, everybody don't have cellphones, everybody don't have the internet, so there's a lot of barriers, the more we get more diverse, more educated, more technology savvy, we're leaving a lot of people behind, and everybody can't keep up, so that's going to be our biggest challenge, is making communication fair and equitable, that people can understand, so, we will work on it, and again, it's not going to happen overnight, but it's going to take a lot of us and a lot of hours coming together, and we will work on it, but we got to give them some, we're not going to wait on FEMA, all those people say, because the laws take seven years to get it changed, by the time something has happened, it, we could be wiped out, so that's us, I mean, we need you to take time, come to meetings, do some critical thinking, write it down, we can put it all together, they may not get the top two, three away, I don't want to do it, but there is a way, let's not be afraid to respect each other, hear each other out, and understand each other's needs. Is that fair enough?
That's fair enough. Now, let me ask you a second question, sir, do you have funds set aside to help me and my family rebuild my house now?
Well, we can try, and you can see my mission right down the street, I cannot make any promises, but if you come down, I tell you what, I would pray that somebody would help us.
And with respect, Mayor, I'd like to recognize all of the surrounding communities that helped my family and I during this, and my street, uh, we have Red Cross Salvation Army, uh, and I'm sure a fact that for about four or five days, they were bringing twenty dollars a day, and that's an absolute honor to have to be respected. Thank you very much, sir.
My name is Yolanda Ramsey, I live in ninety-four, my suburb, and I'm just going to read from my phone. I need to start by addressing you all tonight and stating the facts. In two thousand and five, Lakeview flooded, it was covered by hurricane waves. In two thousand and twelve, Lakeview flooded again. I know that, the city has reported that, I called and asked for help, and they brought out signs that said, "High water in their way." Luckily for me, I have those, those pictures. That brings us to September the eleventh, tropical storm Irma in the city of Kingsland's gross negligence did not only properly maintain the drainage system by performing just the basic tasks of cleaning the ditches and culverts, that left all of us in Lakeview literally sitting ducks. However, Howard, Howard People's Park, which is always underwater when raining, was dry. Two things have changed since the last flood of two thousand and twelve, the assisted living home and the construction of the baseball fields at Howard People's Park. The issue falls solely at the feet of the mayor and the city manager, whom one selected from the others hired at a salary paid by the citizens of Kingsland, to perform their duties without causing harm to others of their personal property, and as of now, you both have been derelict of your duties. The city manager should be fired immediately for the disaster that happened on its watch. I understand better than anyone how a chain of command works, since I've been a Navy wife for almost twenty-one years, and ninety percent of the residents of my neighborhood are connected directly to the Navy, so when I say this, I understand the true meaning and the weight of the words that I speak. We, the taxpayers of my neighborhood, have lost confidence in all of you. If that happens in the Navy, you are all relieved of your duties. If any of you has any dignity left, you would leave and allow us to have some type of leadership so our livelihoods are not all again. During the first stage of gaining access to our homes, the only city official to come down and check on Lakeview was Mr. Grayson Day. I'm not sure what the rest of you are, but I personally remember that on voting day. Mayor Smith finally showed up on September twentieth at six forty-two PM. How I know that exact date and time is because I have a recorded, our conversation. On September twentieth, you informed me you had been there for three days, but three days, this is your fourth arrival there, that is a lot. I have security cameras, I went there, I've worked for you nineteen ninety-eight, you lied to I, myself, and my neighbors up there. That was your first visit to my street, my neighborhood.
Ma'am, I don't owe you that, but what could happen to you, okay?
My husband and I had worked for twenty-three years to accumulate what we had, and now it's all gone, due to your gross negligence. And starting Wednesday, September thirtieth, thirteenth, we had the fire chief and the city manager demanding that the trash be picked up. That wasn't our, that was a trash, that was our personal belongings. That's right. We wouldn't have put that out there had it not have been for the negligence that you all brought on to us. Under no circumstances were we protected by the police at all. We called them up to have our roads shut down while we were driving to save the last bit of stuff that we had, people were driving through our roads, high races speed, sending water crashing into our person, the ones that could have been salvaged. Officer Brown was the one who told us he couldn't do anything. Then we start with polluters, we called the police, asking them for help, the police said it was a gray matter, because again, it was trash on the side of the road occurred. Again, I say, that was not trash, that was a personal belongings of ours. Now, because myself and my husband are people who pay our bills on time, keep our overhead to a low, we don't get a grant from FEMA, we have to take down a thirty-year loan on a house that on September ninth was valued at a hundred and thirty-six thousand, well now, when I signed this bid for, have two liens at two hundred thousand dollars, a house in the lakes, we are not talking Laurel Island. On September the fourth, I called Republic Works and asked them to please come, the storm was coming, maintain our ditches, get them cut. They came on September fifth and totally altered the drainage system on my backyard. It became one gallon length of my neighbor, now it's three-quarters of the length of my fence, ten foot deep, ten foot wide, and twenty yards longer. That is a, that ditch is an overflow for the pond, we have no other drainage but the pond and that ditch. Mayor Smith, the quote that you put in the media, I found utterly unimformed, quote, "You know how some people are going to stay and weather it out, the county had to go out and get some folks, the ones who stayed managed to salvage a few possessions that they could have taken out long before tropical storm Irma laid waste to the coast. They got to take nothing out but damaged possessions and hurt feelings," end quote. Hurt feelings? No, we're pissed, we're angry, and we're defeated, and it wasn't your police or your fire people down there helping people, it was me, who is currently on six antibiotics a day, because I wasn't walking in brackish water, I was walking in sewage water to save my neighbors, who could not save themselves. Did yours on the news? Last but not least, Ms. Linda O'Shoshney, city clerk, when I called her up, when she was answering the phone, and she informed me that she was self-employed, not sure if she's self-employed, are you, Ms.?
That's not quite how it happened, but that's...
You're exactly right, it's gonna be where you were self-employed, you considered yourself self-employed, are you self-employed?
I don't have...
You're paid by the taxpayer, and you are arrogant, you are ugly, and you need to be fired as well.
Got a discipline on it, please. First of all, I'm here, city manager, yes, sir, John Reeder, one-one-eight, Wolf Bay Circle, we also had good cars out there to stop people going by, too, they made it away, leaving them certified, ridiculous. My house is never flooded, but my neighbors are talking, it's been thirty-seven years. I also would like to find a thank you to Red Cross, Salvation Army, providing meals and water trucks, they kept them going, they were drained, they were tired, it was terrible. Disaster relief for Kingsland Church, Kingsland Baptist Church, helps the park and building, which helped a lot. If you open up your door, if you can imagine smell your house, you put your feet on the floor, and it's wet, stinky, and it's driving nuts, you can't see outside, but you shine the flashlight, and just like the water's higher in the window, it gets to you, okay? It got to me, really, I was crying out of a whim, out of a whim. All right, let me get back to what we're going to talk about. The Wall Street Journal, I need everybody to remember that, actually had a storm-strained US sewer system, I'm just going to pull a few parts out of it. In the day, after Hurricane Irma slammed Georgia, both businesses and restaurants were shut down, the problem of flooding or hurricane damage was also untreated, sewage mixing with floodwater, seeping down on manholes, overwhelming an aging system of pipes and pumps. Residents were asked not to take showers, wash dishes, or flush toilet for four days. This is the Wall Street Journal, and schools were closed for a week. All right, they also exposed the failure of aging sewer system that were unable to cope with heavy rainfall and flooding. As a result, many released untreated sewers in streets, rivers, and homes affected towns, and mined there for three days, sewage. Anyway, two spills can contaminate drinking water and kill fish. Now, the APA works with states to provide low-cost loans, which, just like FEMA, I guess for you guys, to municipal treatment plants for capital improvement, environmental projects, anyway, the last year, they provided seven-point-six billion dollars in funding. Now, I'm going to look at that when you're trying to get some revenue from it. I've also liked to address, redress, I guess, when I came here the first time, which, March twenty-sixth, twenty fifteen, when the team came out, I had a flooding problem that I had addressed, well, my neighbors basically tell me, you know, bacon lot will get warm on water, so I, you know, I started looking into it, next thing I know, my, my, my garage started getting water, I, it definitely four, six inches of water, I don't know why it started draining, it wouldn't drain or whatever, so I started keeping record of it, and I asked the council, several years ago about it, about nineteen different things, they even brought these one members here, a copy of everything I had and what happened. Now, here from the city said, and city council, I'm going to quote, "Kingston City Council, director's staff, take action, be here and again, from residents, about drainage problems in Wolf Bay and Highway Lakes area." For last year or two, this is, I'm talking, uh, twenty fifteen, for last year or two, council and city staff have been looking at the HUB, and hearing periodically from residents, staff that also made modification improved drainage. Water continues to gather in areas, residents say storm water flow changed after a new development was built nearby. Now, if I know, look behind us. Um, my name is John Reeder, of course, and I had a few things to say, which I probably shouldn't have said that way, detail of storm water progressively becoming a problem in the last few years, water now floods, it'll dislodge, and rot in drains. I feel the city is, I feel the city is not breaking the problem, I have to have it fixed, because I can't live like this, it's just not right. Now, Grayson Day, startup, he said, "It's time for a robust plan to offer staff to fix the issue, council member," first thing, "we can't continue to allow previous homeowners to suffer because a new development has gone in." It's not just because of that, it's an effect because of that. Now, um, I, I'm retired now, I worked hard to get my house like it is, it was once a beautiful house, but now I go into it, all the sheep rock is tore up, I can't live in it, it's every time, my girlfriend's going married, I had, we had a ready-go, she will never step back in the house again. I can't live there now, if I lived there, I'd be a lone person. That gets to you, I mean, it gets to me bad, um, I think the city itself, we came to develop a thought, it failed to plan, it failed to tech, provide, it failed to execute, and it failed protection, and, uh, we need members to stand for us and with us, and not just talk. The latest thing was about a tax increase, and I'm all for it, and somebody who prepared for a job they're doing, and we don't want people losing their people, it's tough, and I've heard before, but we have to protect the people here now, because giving somebody a raise, Jamaica Avenue is fine, but you got to look at it, a way to provide that money without increasing our taxes. Right now, like we're talking about FEMA, I don't know, I had two aspects of my house, water was high, eighty thousand, I only owe a little of a hundred thousand to my house, walk away, I can think about it, it, it drags me, I, I said I would, I'm retired, I'd like, I'd like for that, and I might have to do that, I don't know if I can stand it or not. It's just, it's just one of these things where you really want to make something you like, retire, have a man cave, have things you work so hard, play on the wall, show off when people come in, and really enjoy life, and come out, have a nice community to go to, and walk back the block, and feel comfortable, not worrying about every time it rains, every time it rains hard, like ditches flood, backyard floods, and the sides, not, it's just poor drainage, and I know the city's known this for a long time, I'm not the only one. We need to concentrate on infrastructure before we concentrate on infrastructure, we need to concentrate on people. To protect us, we'll protect you. We'll help that success, but you have to protect us first. You have to keep us in the loop. When things are happening, new thing going out, please, help the city probably have a sewer and stuff. I don't keep talking about it, I'm just, it's just not right. Thank you very much.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Ted Skel, I live in one sixteen Wolf Bay Circle. Sure, uh, you remember being here last year. The, the drainage issues that we have in Wolf Bay have not been anything that hasn't been common to see during just an afternoon thunderstorm, drainage ditches flood. It's never been a real concern, um, to the point where we're, where we're ready to leave or, or, or put our stuff up high in Delaware, but, uh, many of you know that, that last year during Hurricane Matthew, we took on sewage, alright, we were in the middle of a remodel. We did have to blow it off, off the valve, and we got the voluntary evacuation, which, which we took advantage of. We came home to our house being completely flooded from the inside. And anybody in this room that, that knew about that and helped us, donated, thank you. You really helped us out. We got back on our feet, just in time to lose everything, but it still made, it made huge difference in us. I, my wife Tracy was here, we have two young boys, and, uh, that devastated us last year. And because we were the only family in the county that I know of that, uh, that lost everything like we did, there was not a whole lot of attention, there was not a whole lot of help. FEMA didn't come in because they couldn't, didn't meet that, that cost. This year we met that cost, and I hated to even realize that, that whenever I woke up on the morning after, after Irma passed over, and I saw my neighborhood was underwater after we evacuated in the middle of the storm, in a way I was relieved, because I knew that we were probably gonna get help this year. It, you know, it's very surreal, but, uh, like I said, last year we said we were in the middle of a remodel, we had our toilet off, we evacuated, we came home, sewage. I said, "What can we do to fix this?" We were told by, uh, Mr. Holman that it was our fault because our toilet was off. He said, "Okay." After that, many times we accepted that. We said, "Alright, you know what, maybe it wouldn't have happened, or maybe it would if we didn't have it." This year we knew, when we had everything about put in place, and then we also had our home checked out, installed on our sewage line that I paid for at the park. And immediately, during the nor'easter, our, our bathtub started taking sewage, all through. My neighbors started taking sewage in their bathtubs. We knew then that it, that it was a problem, and that last year was just not a problem. It was gonna happen regardless of what we had in place and what we did. And I fought the sewage water all night long, for hours, with five gallon bucket, running in and out of the storm to keep it out of my house because it was overflowing our bathtubs. My children were in bed, trying not to, to witness anything. My wife was trying to keep her calm for the sake of our kids, and for the sake of me, so that I could keep going. And I went until I was literally past exhaustion, in and out of the storm, in and out of the weather. My hands covered in sewage, my feet covered in sewage. The smell got to me more than once. To the point where I finally called the city. I called a friend of mine that works, that looks across the street, that works for the city, and I said, "Brother, I need help. We're, uh, we're taking on a little water, and I'm trying not to get involved with it. What can you guys do?" Mr. Lee Spell got them into action on our street in a pretty timely manner, and thank you for, for doing that, keeping in touch with me. They got the, uh, some trucks out there, and they started popping manhole covers and, and trying to pump out as much sewage as possible to help us. And it did help. It gave me about a ten minute break from running in and out. Until eventually it got to the point where they couldn't keep up. And I asked again, I said, "It, it's, it's getting to the point where I can't keep up, you guys can't keep up, what else can we do?" And he said, "We, we can cut your sewage line to give you a little bit of fresh relief, uh, but you're most likely gonna flood from the outside now. It's just gonna dump it all into your yard and add to the storm weather that you already have." So I said, "I'm good with that, at least we'll give us time to prepare." So that's what we did. He dug up our sewage line, he got elbow deep in it, and he cut it with a, with a handsaw, and it did. We started taking on thousands of gallons of sewage water, and ran, ran off water into our front yard, which had told, sued my, uh, flooded my, my, my neighbor John, and flooded my neighbor Hector, and, and, and for other houses on our street. But it gave us time to get our kids to safe, get our, get some more stuff put up high, and, uh, I'm thankful for that. What I wanna know is, what were the preventative measures that were not looked at, or were overlooked in eleven months? Eleven months that this has happened back to back to us, that we had time to possibly look into it? Into the, the sewage system itself? Is, is there a damaged piping under there that's taking on drain water when it shouldn't be? It should be two separate systems, correct? Am I correct on that? The drainage water and sewage should be separated? I don't believe that there is, that there's enough toilets in Kingsland to produce that much water that we were taking on for it to just be sewage. I think that there is a flaw, there's, there's damage somewhere, there's something missing that needs to be looked at, it needs to be investigated. And I was asking the question, "Am I gonna have to keep rebuilding my home?" And I was, I was told, "Most likely, most likely." And now I can't walk away from it because I owe one, and I also morally can't walk away from it and, and not disclose it to another family.
That's right. All that's right.
So FEMA is, is again offering us this loan, and I'm, I'm in the same boat as a lot of other people here. I'm not gonna take it, I can't. How are you supposed to do that? Are you supposed to look at that? I, I have furniture that's at the dump right now, but I'm still, I still owe five hundred dollars and some change. So, right, if, if there could be some, some way to, uh, to investigate what's going on with sewage systems, drainage systems, how they're connected, how they're not supposed to be connected, how to fix the problem, and possibly save, uh, incidents like this from happening again, I would love to, uh, to, uh, be informed on that. I'd love to know, because at this point, I don't plan on putting my wife and my kids back in that house. At this point, I'm looking for any avenue, legal avenue, that I can to get out of this home and to prevent anybody else from moving into it.
So, I have questions about Wolf Bay Circle. What is going on at Wolf Bay Circle to where one family is taking everyone's food water? Like, it happened last year. So what did we do in the ten months to figure out why that happened? Did we do it?
I'm not an engineer. I'm not an engineer, and I'm not exactly sure the cause, but I suspect that somewhere along the line, we had storm water infiltrating the sewer system.
So, ten months ago, we had a FEMA one family, it devastated. It's ten months to find out why that happened. Did we use that time to find out?
I think last year was because we lost power to a lift station. It was at the low end of that line.
Okay, is that what you told them? So I heard through the great mind of us, because they didn't have a toilet line.
That may have been a contributing factor, but the fact is, is when that storm came through, we lost power to those lift stations, and the sewer system could then not remove the sewer towards the plant. So it settled in the lowest areas on line.
So is that this the only responsibility to continuously finance because our sewage system is failing? So if you said no, then why is this family doing it again? And y'all, they're not talking about little kids six and seven. Y'all, they got babies. Their little baby is just now walking and talking. He's still a pacifier. So tell me why, ten months ago, our system failed, right? And they paid for it. No, I'm sorry. The city of Kingsland, we took out of our pocket, and we paid for it, and we rebuilt them. And we had ten months to find out what happened. We didn't find out, they called you before the hurricane happened. You cut a pipe, and now all of a sudden the whole entire neighborhood is flooding. What is that?
You can't make it up.
And what are we doing? Because you can't expect them to go back. So is the city of Kingsland gonna do something? Is the city of Kingsland gonna say, "Hey, we clearly failed you if you're either sitting too low or mixing water. We're doing what we need to do to find what's wrong. It's not your responsibility, right?" If it's their responsibility, then they'd be allowed the sewage plant, and they'd fix it, because they wanna keep their home. So what is the city of Kingsland doing to prevent that, so these people don't wake up again, have to call you and cut a pipe, and sacrifice not just their house, but their community? What is the city of Kingsland doing?
What we are doing, and we've been out there, been here this morning, everything that they have, I've been here. We've been talking about our drainage system. I personally went to the family house, I went over there three or four times. And like I say, with, with us being council, we might not make each house.
That's not what I'm sorry.
Okay, no, but ma'am, you have, you can say no, listen, you can say no, but you're not us. And we go, we be going every single person in the house, if somebody in the neighborhood is council, we live as long as one of us come.
No, I hope lucky to show up at my house after it flooded.
I came before, I came before, and we're addressing that, ma'am. You're asking for answers, it's not gonna happen tonight. The city is working on it. We have engineers here, well, and, and, and I tell you what, after this year, like I say, we have shelters here now. We're coming. We, we're coming, like I say, I understand what you're saying, and there's insurance, all this people around here, but I tell you what, you coming, and you was these last...
Hold on, hold on. So you're telling me that they have to step in sewage water twice in ten months? And now we're showing up to take care of it?
The EPA's on like five.
We are proactive, we're proactive now. As soon as they called me, we went over, we talked to the city manager, we talked to the city engineers. You think that we is not doing anything?
No, I didn't say that.
Well, no, you said that we are not taking after ten months, we have ten months to do something. We've been talking, the rain up there taking away some cash, well, we're working on it.
Did your talking lead to their house not flooding?
No, we can't control that.
We can't control it, but their house flooded before it stormed. So if your talking didn't lead to their house not flooding, your talking didn't do them any good.
Well, we can, okay, how can we control that? How can we control the flood?
That's what we're asking. How can we control the flood? Their house did not flood until before the hurricane. So we're not talking about water that came because of the hurricane. We're talking about seven o'clock, it's Sunday night, they called you and said, "It's happening again." Last year they couldn't tell you when it happened because they evacuated. Mayor, you said that people that didn't evacuate had wet possessions and hurt feelings. So how do you explain that to these people who took your advice, they evacuated, no one did anything, this year they say, because last year, they couldn't tell us what happened. This year they can tell us what happened, and now we're being told we have hurt feelings.
Loss of confidence.
Well, I would tell the, anyone of you afterwards, like I say, it's not gonna happen overnight, we have the city engineers here.
So what are we doing for this family so that they don't flood?
You would have to wait till the city council get back with you. You gave us your, you gave us your opinion, you told us your story.
This is better than a one-four hundred thousand dollar house in the lakes, and everywhere else in Canada.
And hurt feelings. Don't worry, I'll pray.
We, uh, ma'am, we are going to listen to our engineers tonight and hope that they can give us some type of remedy that we can repair those problem. And sorry if it took more than I said, long wait, but we ought to know that we are not, not just sitting down. They, they coming constantly trying to figure out what we need to do. There's been a perilous mistake made in the, uh, in the flood lane of the land forever, so all we're trying to do right now is find out what do we need to do moving forward. And I meant meeting up on each other right now, so we can help us get where we can go. So, sir, would you go ahead?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilor, um, my name is Chuck, I'm seeing one, I live on Heinrich Road also. Yeah, I feel like, I feel like what a bit of a jackass to come in here and say that, um, you know, I'm against a raise for our law enforcement police officers. Uh, I feel like that the guys that can come in and say, maybe guys that can carry guns for a living should make more than I make as a school teacher and baseball coach. And I think, I'm, I'm kidding, but they don't. But, you know, at the same time, I look at it, and I'm going, you know, my house a month ago was, you know, it was worth a little over that hundred thousand dollars, and forty-one dollars a month. I've got people on the street that don't have forty-one dollars left anymore. Um, I've got, uh, you know, forty thousand dollars worth of damage, and I've gotta figure out if it's worth putting into that same house. And, yeah, I realize that they're engineers, and people smarter than I am standing in this room, uh, people that get, you know, paid to make those decisions. You know, between Matthew that came through last year, Irma that came through this year, um, relative rainfalls, you know, somewhere close, I don't really have exact numbers, I'm gonna try and bash anybody to speak it. But, you know, the one project in our area, I, I know that, you know, I've got sympathy for the Meadows and that side, but I don't know their areas, I'm speaking strictly online. The, the main project that's changed in our area is the work on Coal Rain. Um, so I'm, I guess, I guess my asking is that, you know, whoever, you know, the DOT, the city things, or the project managers for that, um, you know, how far those floodplains, you know, lands would extend, you know, off of Coal Rain Road? Um, you know, were they, were they studied and put out by the engineers to cover, you know, how the one area, the one neighborhood in, you know, in our area that flooded? Um, like Ms. Ramsey said, you know, the, uh, Howard People's Park, we couldn't water across the street. Um, you know, the, the neighborhoods around us didn't flood, but we had water over the tops of mailbox, because my mailbox is coming out of the middle of our street. So you look at the, you, you look at the, you know, the inability to get the water across the street, um, you look at the, the nursing home project that she mentioned, and you, you talk about, you know, the, the project on Coal Rain, and, I mean, that's, that's the common denominator in the storm. So I'm, I'm guessing, you know, that there, you know, if people were looking for open record through the west, or if they were looking at the engineering plan on Coal Rain, you know, did that take our neighborhood into effect? Because that's the only thing that's really changed. Yes, we've had bad drainage, everybody's known it, um, you know, but we've never had a situation where there should have been four and a half foot of water coming out of our street. Um, so, you know, I guess if, you know, if we, and I realize that, yes, that's a disaster, uh, hurricane, but it was a category one storm. I understand it still rains, damage still does all of that, but what happened shouldn't have happened. And I guess in between those two storms, you know, my, my question is, you know, did we do our homework on the project on Coal Rain before it absolutely backed up and flooded our neighborhood? Yeah, I realize everybody's got the same story I've got, you know, yeah, I mean, I, I, I probably threw away ninety percent of the stuff I own. I set my driveway and drank a six pack while I watched him dump bucket truck by bucket truck all the time in my daughter's Barbie, Barbie doll house.
Someone tried to steal from the trash.
And like I said, you know, I realize that everybody's got raw emotions, everybody's, you know, frustrated because, you know, we've all lost. I understand that. I'm not trying to point fingers, but I'm just, you know, rastely looking at, you know, was, how far would that floodplain have been investigated, you know, off of that major construction project Coal Rain, because that pushed all the wires.
And the tars.
And it couldn't, it couldn't go anywhere else.
The tars are on fire.
I mean, I understand that, you know, yes, this sucks, yes, there's been a lot of damage, and, uh, you know, for a baseball coach, I don't understand floodplains and drainage flows and everything else. But that's the only, that's the only difference that's happened that would have caused that damage. So I, I guess I'm asking, you know, if there are, you know, engineering aspects, you know, that would show and document, how's this work on Coal Rain, this major construction project, gonna affect my neighborhood just right around the corner?
I know one thing, Senator, if you bring this information, and I, I like civil engineers, but we need to find out from the, the state who's doing that project out there, just what kind of flood plans that they have, all that. Ken, do we have any information on that from that project out there?
I, I don't have any, I, I don't have any on that. That was a dummy project, and it had very, very little, uh, coordination with the city on it. I passed some information to them. I don't see it as being a contributor to this, other than the fact, you know, all the way around, there was a lot of rain previous to when the ground was saturated, and because of that saturation, you know, the first few inches of this rain had no place to dwell in the ground and stay on the top.
And we've argued for the drainage to be protected by the city, so it's not...
We would, uh, if you would next, uh, this week, we need to find out from the state, have they devised any kind of plan to present to the city, so that at least we can know what's going on with that plan out there. So that at least we can know what's going on with that plan out there.
Just seeing that, and the tards were left out of Col rain the entire time during the storm, so you know where to get for the tards?
We never do a drainage pump.
Is there any one of us that might come in and speak, sir?
Ed Gushen.
I'm sorry to listen.
Gushen, G-U-S-H-E-N. One oh four, it's the senior board, I was up here earlier this morning. Earlier this morning, Mr. Smith, I heard you say something that really filled the blocks in, what I've been wondering about. Why that place that all those houses were given clearance would be built on? Why it flooded? And it's what used, because it floods downhill. And that one four-foot culvert couldn't possibly handle all the water that drains down from ninety-five, and it butts against what I now call the Gross Road Dam. It can't go through that pipe, four-foot pipe, because it's so jammed up with stuff that might have been cleared out today, I don't know.
It was, we have it.
Yeah, great, it cleared it out today, after probably ten million dollars worth of damage was done on that street. And then, and then you said this. Well, prior to that, I remember coming to a meeting, and a gentleman, probably somebody from your office, the heat plants, said this. You were talking about money, who was going to spend for what, what you were going to do, and he says, "Well, we've got to look into the drainage." And you said, "Well, look into the drainage," this is at a meeting, when we widened Col rain road, not Col rain, but Gross Road, right where that culvert was at. Now, this is years ago, five, six years ago. In five or six years, you had a time bomb waiting down there, and several floodings, but there was no, you didn't improve the drainage. And then what did you say today? This is what you said, why I couldn't figure this out. You said that the people on the other side of Gross Road, who own that property that that culvert butts into, didn't want you guys over there widening drainage and that. You knew all this stuff.
Sir, I think you're mistaken, but I never told you that.
I'm sorry, but.
I never told you that, the people did not want us on that, I did not tell you that this morning.
Well, on it, or to use it, or to develop it, they didn't want you over there doing anything to their property. You had the one culvert, and that was it, and you allowed all those houses to be built.
I don't have, what you heard this morning was it was, the statement was made this morning that Rainier Corporation did not want us to dump any water on the property, but I did not tell you that, it was stated like that this morning. If anyone that has, sir, anyone that hasn't spoken.
Yeah, so the two thousand four Kilo versus New London ruling, saying the government can acquire land from private purchase from a private individual. So that's you homeowners, by the way, just to clarify. The government, in government, as New London local city, just like Kingsland is a local city, can acquire actual property from an individual and sell it to Walmart, and you're going to sit here, that man right there was the one who told us that, just now, to answer, this man right here, he asked that question. Why, why, why did you widen that drainage? The individual in the back, who, believe works for this council, if I'm not mistaken, said that the individual would not allow you to widen the drainage. That's how eminent domain works. You're allowed to sell a property to Walmart, and you can't fix the problem? Are you kidding me? So your increase in taxes, one point two million dollars, by the way, just so everybody's clear, I did the math in the bathroom, I calculated, it wasn't too hard, one point two million dollars. So you take eighty individuals who work for the Kingsland Fire Department, Kingsland Police Department, divide half of that up, that's six hundred thousand dollars, that's seventy-five hundred dollars apiece for each one of the individuals, what if we had a retention problem, giving them a pay increase? Probably not, anyway, so that's six hundred thousand dollars to them, they're six hundred thousand dollars. I wonder if you could acquire that property and fix the problem, so this man right here, who, by the way, when we're done, he talks about an RV. And this man right here will have it for the problem, or any of these other individuals here. Why do we have an eminent domain policy? An eminent domain is actually established, not because we needed to build Melrose, as most people would say, but eminent domain was actually established so that we can build infrastructure to prevent further damage to a particular individuals. And by the way, ma'am, you asked that question, if you had to answer this lady's question a minute ago. Last time I checked, we live in the United States of America, and the government works for us. You are our employees, not the government. The word government is actually kind of bothers me, because it implies that you have the power over me, I have individual rights, you don't give them to me. And these are individual right property owners, who are about to experience a tax increase after having a tax depre, or a property depreciation. You're going to sit here and tell me, "We're going to increase your taxes, spend it on our law enforcement and our fire departments." By the way, gentlemen, I want that to happen, I do. You're not going to do anything to fix the problem, we have Kilo versus New London, and a million other eminent domain policies that would allow you to fix the problem. Well, let's not do that. No, we'll, we'll give them a pay increase, and I wonder how much will pay increase yours is? Or, or individuals who work for you, how much you paying those engineers? I'm not an engineer either, but I am a plumber. I wonder if I could probably fix the problem? I feel like hiring three plumbers at the price that we're watching, about fifty thousand dollars a year, and one engineer at a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, if you could get the same result. As a matter of fact, I'm not an expert in a lot of things, but I do know guns very well, and I know this experience from, from many, many, many people in the fire industry, that you hire an engineer, and he's still not as good as the fifty thousand dollar engineer. So you naturally feel that. So design it on paper all you want to, hire your expensive engineer, that's fine with me. Again, you're going to increase taxes with no answer as to how to fix a problem that's currently reoccurring, as we sit here. And, and at the same time, you have individuals here that need a pay raise. How much you can get? Drop the mic.
We have my answers in a copy on one side of the clock.
My name's Kirkwood, we're three three zero, West Elizabeth, in Georgia. And it's obvious that there are people here that have really hard issues. Curse Woodward. Woodward, do you want to be here? Three three zero, West Elizabeth, in Georgia. There are people here that are truly suffering, and I can express their anger and their inability to identify and inject us and solve the problem. They hold you accountable, and rightfully so. But I want to talk, and I know this may seem very minor, but if you driven around easily, every drainage ditch is full. It's full. Now, my first question to you city managers, how many retrieval trucks do we have online at this time? Retrieval trucks, one with a claw, to pick the junk up and get rid of, how many?
I believe we have a total of three.
How many are actually operated?
How many are operated?
Three.
Three.
Okay. God forbid we have a serious storm. If you think you've got problems now, I shot three rattlesnakes already, okay? One rat, okay? I know this may seem minor to your household, but if we get a serious storm within the next month, and all those drainage ditches are full, and there's no place for it to go, you have no idea what's going to happen to the city property. It needs to be addressed, you need to hire extra people to get this stuff off the road, to get these drainage ditches cleaned up and re-crewed, okay? And if that means a fifty dollar a household assessment to come and get it, because everybody in this room will suffer if those drainage ditches aren't kept clear, okay? What they did, what they did, they did pretty well, we may not have enough of them. The sewer system, it does need work. But if you, if you don't address this, and we get another storm, and all this stuff is laying out here, okay? It's going to be even worse. So I want to know what your plan is, who you're going to hire, come out to all these residents, and get this stuff out of the ditches, so at least what we have will work effectively.
We've contracted with.
Tim Norton.
Tim Norton.
And who is?
My local.
He's a local contractor.
And?
And he's going to help us with the debris.
And how long do you think it's going to take?
It's already started.
It was supposed to start today, I haven't seen it, it was supposed to start today.
Well, I think he has a, he's a little bit.
I don't know.
I'm not sure either, he's a pretty big guy.
Like I said, I know my concerns, this concern may not help these people right here, but if we don't fix it, it's going to be worse. But we are running our limelight, the three trucks to pick it up, we are running seven days a week, an extra hour.
I've been city manager for three years now. I've been city manager for three years now, we've had some very serious conversations with our engineers and other consultants about the state of our infrastructure, it has been a process for us, and we will continue to work on the city's shows.
Okay, I don't mean to scare you, but thank you. Got to get it done.
My name is Kim Presley, and I live at one oh five Wolf Bay Circle. And I'm all for a paid increase for our first responders. My son, being one of the cadets that graduates this Friday, to become a Kingsland police officer. I value his life, I don't believe in any other paid, whatever lives or work. But, being a resident in Wolf Bay Circle, I have a few questions. Text and tracing, house floods all the time, the yards flood all the time. I have the pictures in my phone, starting at seven o'clock, when John came to my door asking us to come out and look, because he knows I work at the Truman George, although I'm not a reporter, I'm just a sales analyst. I went out and I looked, and I was amazed, once again, that my four neighbors' house was, the yard was hanging on water everywhere. And the sewage was just welting up out of the manhole. The storm had not even started at that point, but all of our ditches were full, as they are all the time during a thunderstorm. But the thing that struck me the strangest of it all is during all of this, can anyone of you tell me why, right here at the intersection of forty and seventeen, where I drive home, every time there's a storm, which there were many this summer, there are high water signs, standing water, the roads are flooding. However, I didn't observe any of that flooding during this hurricane storm, but I observed it in my neighborhood. I observed it in other neighborhoods as I was with my pastor and staff to help families. I observed it in several neighborhoods, but I didn't see any flooding at Highway forty and seventeen this time. What was done to divert that water, and did that clause flooding to the Meadows until Wolf Bay started?
No, we have, there's no improvement, as a matter of fact, we can't do anything with that. That's the state, the state's only one that can come in here on that. We can't do anything to that. So I don't know whether they have been in here, do you know whether they got me wrong, and did anything to that?
The only thing that's been changed to the intersection out there is just where they resurfaced it. That's the only change is.
No, we can't do anything with that.
Sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, my name is Jim Waisen, again, I have my intention. Throughout the statements tonight, it's been come clear, a lot of things that have happened in the name of the with prevention of that also includes maintenance schedules. And that was even about, Ms. Ramsey brought up that on the fourth, they had enlarged the ditch. What is your tracking period for the manholes? Because I can, I can tell you this, and the reason why I ask that, I have two manholes in my house. I have one after my house, in between my neighbor's house and mine, and I believe that is some rusted or corroded, that you couldn't open the pipeline. And about a year ago, I was mowing my lawn, and I keep it trimmed, very, very neat, and as I was trimming it, I tripped into a hole. As I pulled the grass away, the mud, the dirt, and everything else, I found another manhole for my yard. And I can tell you over the ten years that I've been there, I'm the only one that has cleaned that out. And I know for a fact I can't get that covered off by myself, but I've never seen anyone else there. Is there a tracking period on how you guys keep the manholes clean? And now, take now for instance. I don't expect anyone to be sewer rats, but I know I have seen debris falling into the vents. And if we get another storm, who knows what's blocking those manholes and everything along the length of streets now? So, you know, those, those are questions, is there an actual tracking period? Most of us that do work were held to standards of maintenance and maintenance requirement. If those aren't done, the people come in and shut us down. And if we're working unsafe, we should expect to be shut down. But if we're having to live in unsafe conditions, who can we turn to to shut them down?
Your vote. Sir, what height rate room, I'm sorry, you get the number.
One one zero. And as you look into my yard, right on my property line, on the right side of my line, you'll find the forward one, about four and a half feet from the roadside, and the aft is in between two fences, and it sits probably seven and a half inches high from the ground. The forward one sits about seventy-two below ground. Should you decide to keep those clean, I would appreciate it, because that's what's best, I have to go and I have to get them removed.
Sunny girls coming around picking up the trash in front of my house and everything. So I asked her, I said, "Why are you working sunny, using up their tax money on sunny?" She said, "Oh, well FEMA is paying us." I think she told me, she says FEMA is paying us. Now, are you paying that, or is FEMA paying us? Thanks.
So the question is, could you give me your name, please?
Anthony Morrison Kevich. And they are C-I-N-K-E-V-I-C-A. And I asked the girl a question, and she told me FEMA was paying, not the city.
Okay, what happens is, we have to pay them, and then FEMA reverses us, because they're working overtime to get that. Remember, they're working seven days a week, so that's.
Sunny, sunny.
That's what I'm saying.
Double time in there.
It's not double time.
It's supposed to be double time.
Pardon?
It's supposed to be double time working for.
He said double time and a half.
Okay, well, double time. Twelve and twelve is twenty-four, fifteen or fifteen thirty.
My name is Sarah Harris, I live on six ten Mason Street. I just want to say to everybody, I feel a sympathy who have had a loss and got flooded out. Furthermore, I'd like to ask the mayor, when, when, if we do raise the tax, the minimum rate, would it have anything to do with our county tax? No, if at all. I'm not against the police officers, uh, violence, uh, nothing like that. But this time, this time, as the citizens of this city have had, the laws flooded out and everything, I don't think it's time to raise the minimum rate. And I would say this to all the citizens, I haven't heard that we have no death in Kingston when we had the flood out whatsoever. So you can look forward to saying, "Thank God for that."
And sir, again, to y'all, this is why we're asking y'all to come here. We did not arbitrarily try to impose this, and we need to hear from the citizens. So I don't, y'all think that we're just arbitrarily doing something to do it and not listening to y'all. I don't know what's going to lead to the end of this once we finish these hearings.
I just have two questions. One is, who is the engineer, or the engineer company that you hired?
This gentleman right here.
In the little laser?
Pardon?
In his little laser?
He's, he's.
I'm not here, I'm here tonight. The second thing is, the military is based on pre-Erma, the military pilots and pre-Erma values of houses. Sixty, or sixty-three houses don't have those values anymore. We've lost on September the eleventh, twenty thousand dollars in value of our houses. So that puts me at about a hundred and sixteen thousand with a two hundred thousand dollar one. Do you guys understand that? I hope you do. I hope you do. Their market value is not existent anymore. What is the engineer company?
I work with Carter and Slidvich again, he works with Thomas and I.
How does that make sense?
Uh, no, I'm out of Macon, Georgia, and he's out of Brunswick.
Y'all are Thomas.
I'm watering sewer, he's storing.
You got sewer here, and you got water all back here.
Well, one thing I just have to go with, remember, two.
Sir, could you give us a. Just go to the foreman if you like, please.
Water and sewer. Two separate systems. Drainage and sewer, two separate systems. Must be maintained. When I grew up, the smoke was coming out of the manhole. He said, "Dad, dad, what's, what is it?" He said, "Oh, that's the city." That's the city. They're making sure that there's no illegal connections between the sewer and the sanitary sewer and sewer. Should not be connected. Two very separate systems.
One of the things unfortunately is that we have these cleanouts in a lot of residents' hump yards. And we're finding out that many of them, they'll knock that top off with the lawnmower or whatever. And a lot of that water lines up in our system. And that's a problem. Is that correct, Ron?
Yes, sir.
And that's from our public works department, where they go around doing these checks. Finding out that torrential amounts of water is seeping into our system. And we're trying to treat that. It may seem unloved, but it's a problem, because it's working the pumps more than what they should. Has nothing to do with that. But it does, whenever we have something like that, that took place a couple of weeks ago, that excess water gets into our system. So we would ask, you know, hopefully that we can find some of those, like, cleanouts and get tops on the residents' water. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to come to you for us, that hasn't had a chance to come in for us? Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Ed Harris, and I live on Six Ten Hudson Avenue, Gary, Texas.
And speak into the mic, please.
I'm Pat Harris, I live at Six Ten Hudson Avenue, Gary, Texas, Georgia. I'm not from here. I'm from across the bridge. I've been here for nineteen years. And I tell you, I love living in Kingston. I would like to say this, that it's supposed to be Love Time USA. You got that name, uh, in Love Time. And the next thing I would like to say is that, I'm sorry for all of your worries. And I wish there was something that I could do to help you with your loss. But I truly believe that if we stick together, and if we be together, it's not going to happen different. But if we stick together, and if we be together, I believe we will overcome. And now, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask you a question. And my question is, we heard everybody saying what y'all can do. What can we do to help you all? Is there anything I can help you do? I'll tell y'all, too. I'm with it, one hundred percent.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who might want to speak?
Is there an answer to that question? No, what can we do?
If you'd like to come to us and speak to us, just be a free member of us, please.
Is there an answer to that question to us, and what can we do to help you, to help us?
We'd be delighted to get back with you in time now. Go ahead.
I'm H two one Taylor, I live at one thirteen Hydrangea Road, and I am a homeowner. First I want to say thank you to Mr. Deng, your family came out, your wife and three daughters came out. City, uh, the spell, city manager. Are you the one in charge of the city mowing and whatnot like that? Like, taking care of maintenance of the general grass stuff?
Well, I have public works directors.
Okay. Can you give me a definition of what is considered mowing? Who did any, but can actually, what do you consider mowing?
Cutting down the grass.
Cutting down the grass, correct. That is mowing. Anybody here, when you say you mow your lawn, you cut the grass? When I'm sitting in my backyard watching the city mow, taking brush off against five inch trees like this and pushing them over, that's not mowing. And then they don't come back to clean it up, and it clogs the drainage. That's what happened in the lakes, Lake Nausau. Everybody, this house flooded, because that's not mowing. That's cutting trees, clearing trees.
What's sewage?
You said they were left there.
A brush hog, a brush hog coming on a bobcat like this, pushing the trees down and laughing. Right behind my house, I can step down to my backyard and see it.
I apologize, I was not aware of that.
Well, that's four million dollars that you apologize, you know, huh?
Evening, um, Mayor Smith and two councilmen. I just want to say, I'm Dolores Allen. I live at one twenty-nine Westwood Neve Drive. Um, my parents are the homeowners, they're seventy-six years old. Um, they've lost everything. Um, but I did want to say to everybody, just like the citizens, that we do need to stick together. We need to come together and figure out how to help you all. But I do want to let you all know that it has to happen. And the plane also came to our family's aid as well. So I don't want you all to think that they're not doing, it's just a matter of we can't get through everybody at the same time. But Jim, the plane, uh, thank you, Pastor Kim, I think you as well. Um, also, Mr. Kennedy and I were talking, you mentioned, you longer mentioned, about the village. The fact that everybody's property is no longer at the value that it was. So we do both would like to see this at the appeal.
Anyone else?
I'm George Kaiser, I live at two oh seven Laurel Landing Boulevard. I gave you forty votes about a year and a half ago and told you that Gum Branch, the stream that runs from across the fire station, that Rose Road, that comes all the way through Laurel Landing and empties into the marsh, had a beaver problem. There's three beaver dams in there. I told you all about it, and everybody thought it was kind of cute. Well, now it's not so cute. Because I think some of the drainage problems, there's three beaver dams there, some of the drainage problems are caused by the beavers backing that up. I've been there for eleven years, that stream is no more than ten foot wide. For the last two and a half years, it's been twenty or thirty foot wide. The tree, the earth is saturated with water, the trees are falling down. The trees are blocking that breeze as well. It's all backed up in there. I didn't get water in my home, but I've got sixty yards in my backyard, and that water was within ten foot of my house. Someone mentioned it, that was a category one west of us. If we get a two or a three east of us, I'm going to be underwater. Because of beavers. And I was told, I was told that the city needed permits to relocate them. I talked to DNR, DNR says they're a pest, kill them. One of the homeowners tried to do that, another homeowner turned them in, and they got in trouble for discharging a firearm in the city. I don't think this is something homeowners should have to deal with. It's drainage for this city. There's one road that goes back into Laurel Landing. When that storm hit, we had two or three foot of water running across the road. You could not drive in or out of Laurel Landing, because of those damn beaver dams. It's in the minutes. I talked to you about a year and a half, about, a year ago about that, so, if you notice.
Sir, as you, you know, that, we, I was part of that homeowners association. And to know, there was a turban hired that came out and, um, took the beavers. They did, they could have been twice, but they know soon to get, if we move the beavers, the water starts flowing again, and the beavers come back. It's been a lot on ongoing.
My point is, all the trees are down there, so I can run out as well.
We're aware of that. But it's mostly homeowners.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I'm Sally Smith, I live on Hydrangea Road, the rest of my neighborhood in the lakes. Uh, as you know, we flooded, and if it's from drainage and possibly sewage, um, is there any plan in place to get the EPA or the health department to check our homes to make sure our children and our elderly neighbors, whose husbands had their path, their birth be capitated for medical reasons, that we're in the floodwater, to get them checked, to make sure that we're all not being affected with diseases?
Make sure, make sure.
Our whole neighborhood, the two streets on Honeysuckle and Hydrangea. Is there no way, and this man's house, did your house get checked? And it was sewage. It was sewage, yeah, it was sewage too. So is there not a way to have someone, you don't have to pay for this? Yeah.
Yes, we've been in touch with the, with the environmental protection division, and we are setting up testing stations as part of the process. So yes, I'm sure.
Okay, my next question is, if we've been exposed to this, and we had to go ourselves, and the churches, and the children from the churches, and I'm a teacher, and local students came, also those in my neighborhood, to help rip out these things in our homes that may have sewage and be contaminated. And now other looters have also taken our things, and taken them to their homes. And if it is sewage and filth and disgust, are we all infected with something like hepatitis C or some other thing that we don't know yet? And who's going to pay for that? My homeowners insurance? My flood insurance policy that, um, we live in a class X, um, that's never really technically flooded, but yet flooded three times, so we're not required to have flood insurance? I'm just trying to figure that out, because I've already been to the ER, I've already been on two antibiotics. So I'm just trying to figure out who's going to pay my medical bills, plus who's going to pay for my house damage? Who's going to tell my child that her mother's so sick that she can't take care of her right now? Or explain to my child why she's a wolf since, because she's so sick, from filth that's been in the house, because nobody came in a timely manner, because we already ripped it all out? And, and the pingers already came and took it. So who's going to test it now? Is it in the soil in the house, or is it in my feet, as I was going through floodwaters? When nobody on the street came to help us build our neighborhood? And, and where were the drainage pumps to come pump the water out, to help us quicker? Because it took me three days to get home from a mandatory evacuation from Mississippi, and I'm watching my house flood on Facebook Live, and my neighbors who are stuck being floating out on grass, put on the news. But nobody knew about Kingston, Georgia. We only know about Saint, uh, Saint Mary's, God bless the waterfront. When there's homes and families who are now exposed to sewage, we know it's the city. This is a city problem. This is a city problem with engineer that wasn't held, held accountable and done properly. So now we have a bigger problem. The problem is, does FEMA, a federal agency, come in and pay us out? No, they won't. Because, see, we have money. So we have to pay that loan, and have a second lien against our house. Who here has an extra hundred thousand dollars just to pay out for the next thirty years? Does anybody? No.
So are people up there?
I don't. I went to college, I'm a math teacher. I can crunch the numbers. So when I'm sitting at a FEMA place, which, by the way, um, the information was incorrect on Facebook, posted by someone in the county, I don't know who, um, that FEMA was coming to the rec center with the, the insurance agency guy, and the time was planned from the state. When I showed up with my husband, the only person sitting at the rec center that day that was posted that FEMA was going to be there, and GMA, was the Georgia State Insurance man. And he left, and he goes, "Your county doesn't get it right." Ah! Who's paying? And we put it, I'm all for paying our police officers. I got relatives who are Georgia State Patrol, I got relatives who are Pennsylvania State Patrol. I got people who are in the fire stations. I'm all for giving them their money, though like everybody else. My house is now, which was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand when I purchased it, it's going to cost me about fifty thousand to sixty thousand just to restore my structure. Which FEMA, because, um, I may or may not be approved for an SBA loan, may only give me a grant as little as two thousand dollars. But I may also have, um, let's see, hepatitis C from sewage, because nobody tested us yet. Nobody tested our homes.
But the trash lanes get paid.
But the people are hoping to get double time on a Sunday? But where's the EPA right now? Where's the health department right now? I'm at school with kids who have nothing. There's a kid next to me who was renting his home, his parents not looked with his child for two years. He is forced to go to school in bully, because they have nothing left. Because they're renters. That whole child, his whole family, has been uprooted and sowed away. They had nothing to begin with. We gave them food on a daily basis. I checked his homework on a daily basis, at home. Off hours, as a teacher, but I don't get paid extra. Nobody's paying anybody else here extra.
So you're not getting a break on water?
No, no, and, and our water? Am I going to have to pay for the water break too? But the water flooded my house from the sewage, because you know, guys, that'll prove that it was the city. Once our water bills come, and our water bills increased, more than your normal monthly, because that'll prove that it's the city's fault.
They're getting away, not even justice.
I mean, there ought to change the facts. It's our, it's dumb right now, so they're changing it right now. So I want to know, when is the health department, when is the EPA coming? When are we all getting tested for having sewage in our bodies? When are they setting up stations to draw blood, to check us, to make sure there's nothing wrong with us?
We have not done that. But I would recommend, if you have a way to do it, go to the health department and get it checked.
So my insurance has to pay?
I'm not sure, I'm staying checked with them. And if you want. Okay, and I'll tell you what. Get with me, and we'll go to, I'll go to the department, and I'll get back with you. Because I want just, we want to solve the problem, and I'm hearing what you're saying. We do a lot for this community, and like I say, we are affected just like you are. Maybe not to the limit, not extreme, but we want you taken care of. And all the people around here know me, we will get something done. So, if you go to the emergency room, wherever you need to go, let me know. If you go get checked out, get checked, and get your family checked out. And somebody, you report whether you have been combed, or tampered with, or you have got any other diseases.
Do you guys all hear that? The whole neighborhood, we're going to go to the health department together?
Well, I told them, no, I said, "Let me go and check, I'll get back with you, I'll get your name and number. I'll go and check, because we came from far. But, uh, my baby, uh, where's she at? Who are they?
Yeah, it's okay, we're gonna wait.
Let's, let's get together, and we'll change numbers, so we have a plan. I'll check.
I'd like to say thank you very much, Dave, for coming out and helping us. Yeah.
Thank you, every mayor. Anyone else?
I got one, I just got one quick question. Concerning lift stations, we have about seventy lifting stations in our neighborhood.
Yes.
All right, with primary power there, what do they have for backup? Do they have a secondary power source, or is it secure about, or what?
We have backup pumps, that would move the lift stations, lift station. We do not have enough for all seventy, we couldn't do that, I mean, the cost would be just, you would not even be able, anybody would be able to afford that.
But all seventy don't fail one time.
It did during this storm, we only had a few at the Gulfport that would still have power though.
So there's no way to.
And they all pumped ones that didn't have power, so.
What did you say?
We had, the only place that really had any power left was in the Gulfport area, and a couple of spots in the lakes. So, over, over sixty of our lift stations were out of power all at the same time. And all those pumped to places that didn't have power, if we didn't turn those off, they would force even more, so.
Why do you work in design for civil service? We had a primary, secondary, you know, automatic blood transfer, we had ways, we had body change. We had ways to cure valves, if we had to, in what case of emergency. I was just wondering, if guilty lift stations, somebody looking at, say, you know what, if we lose primary power, what do we have? We plug generators into them real quick and keep going, or do we run a secondary power source? We know the place, we know is secure, like the base does, with military applications? Because seventy is one time, a lot to fail, and have nothing to do. And all flowing back downhill again and again and again. That's just our task.
My name is Senator Salas. Um, my address is one forty Wolf Bay Circle. My question is, two years ago, I wanted to buy a daughter house. And I wanted to check with the insurance. There's three different insurers I want to. I wanted to have flood insurance. And because the area where we live, this house, four times we have heard that had been flooded. What does it think, our areas that had been flooded, to have, to be sewn, flood sewn, that the insurance would sell us insurance? That's simple.
Okay. They don't, we don't, we, we don't set the flood zones, the city doesn't set that. That comes through, uh, Karen, are you back there?
Yes, sir. And the thing is, anybody anywhere on mountaintop, if I flood insurance.
We all have been, we have some hazard, our people. Because it's not a flood zone, they would not sell people an insurance.
Because it is.
Because it is. That doesn't prevent you from getting, uh, your.
They don't sell it. I had, I questioned two companies when I bought my house.
That I don't understand is there are a lot of people not in flood lanes that, that are non-shaded X, which is what you're referring to. That, that can still buy insurance. Yeah, I chose not to buy a non-shaded X, but I could, it was offered to me by a mortgage company.
When I went to buy my insurance, they, they sell because there was not a flood insurance. And a lot of people here, people that I don't know, I know my people here. We have questions to get insurance and they say, no, because it's not a flood insurance. Thank you, that was my question.
Anyone else?
Ken, can you tell us, I have Robbie, give us a quick rundown of the actual situation that you get out there in the town. I mean, I think that'd be important for us to hear, everybody here, the, the storm description that you. I don't mind giving us a quick briefing, I think everybody needs to hear that. Not that it changes everybody's opinion, it's not going to, exactly, there's nothing to change in my mind. There's a lot of high emotions and that's understandable, but we do wanna get out a little bit more information.
If it all makes sense.
Do this over there so I can raise the crowd.
Take a moment.
If I can get this out. Okay, uh, everybody, can you hear me okay? Did you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. It's not that I don't wanna turn my back on y'all, it's really not that, it's, uh, I'm not sure where to start actually, but I hear the emotion, I really, really hear the emotion. I feel for everyone who's lost something, whether it's your house or whatever, doesn't, you know, whatever it is, doesn't matter. But, and I'm not here to talk about individual drainage problems. I'm here to talk about what the storm event was. And I think, if you listen to the media, I think you get a gist of it. But what I wanna do is just talk about what the storm event was compared to what we normally deal with on a day-to-day basis. We had, and again, I do feel for everyone who's lost something. We had a wet summer. And this is not engineering speak, it's just the facts of the matter. We had a wet summer, the ground was saturated to a certain extent. Before the storm, we were coming off of a full moon, which meant the tides were higher. We had a northeast wind three or four days before the storm, which drove the tides higher. Now, before I get further, I'm making a general statement across the county. Now, I understand that Saint Mary's, the coast is different with Kingsland, but I am making a point here. Everything drains to a point, it goes to the ocean where there's still the Timmer River basin, Creek River, Saint Mary's River, doesn't matter. We had a northeast wind coming in, but the kicker is, as far as Kingsland goes, we had a fifteen to twenty inch rainfall in one day. Which is way beyond anything we designed things for. So again, I'm not talking engineering speak, but can you, where's the, uh, where's our ICA? Look, there it is, can you put that? Get a chart up? This is a chart, actually, Thursday night at the public hearing for, for the, uh, budget. I brought this up, I didn't, I did not have the chart up, but, you know, I apologize for the resolution, hopefully everybody can see this. It's available. This is a chart that is provided by NOAA. This is what we, as engineers, design for in stormwater events. We typically design for a twenty-five year, twenty-four hour storm, which is about eight point one six inches. When we design, we check for a hundred year event, which is a twenty-four hour storm, and a hundred year event, that's about ten point eight maybe eleven inches. That's the typical design parameters we work in as engineers, as, as drainage engineers, development engineers. I see people nodding, shaking their heads. Just bear with me, please. If we had a fifteen to twenty inch rainfall, that pushes the parameters out to here, which is anywhere between a two hundred to a thousand year rainfall event in a twenty-four hour period. We don't design for that. We just don't. Doesn't make your life easier if you lost your home, I'm just telling you, that's what we design for. So the bottom line is, we had a five hundred to a thousand year event during Irma that we typically don't have.
So what, what areas are flooding out of this?
I'll answer your questions, of course, I'm not gonna answer individual drainage questions about, about your community or anything like that. When I say that, I might be rude or anything, but what I can tell you, over the past ten to twelve days, we, us, the city, I work with the county also, we are working on this very closely for individual drainage problems. Now, I know there's people that said, you know, we had issues last year, year before last, nobody did anything well. But I can tell you, this council here is dedicated to do something. Now, if it meant, if it meant that in the past they haven't done anything, although they've said it, I can tell you, I've been working for the city for twenty years. There's more urgency right now than there's ever been. To try to fix this as best we can, so. Now, what's, any questions?
Yeah, Robbie, I have a question down here.
Uh, yes, please, yes.
You say that we had a northeast wind?
Yes.
A lot of rain?
Yes.
A storm surge?
Yes.
How does this compare with, uh, Superstorm Sandy that hit up in the, uh, New Jersey, New York area?
I'm not completely familiar with that, but it's very similar. We, we, when we get, and I forgot to mention, we had a high tide situation, and we have a six foot tide swing here, average.
So, you know, they, they had a, coming off a nor'easter that was a hybrid storm with a, with a tropical storm, hit at a high tide. And then made it Superstorm Sandy and, but here we are in low Kingsland, Georgia, basically the same thing.
I've heard it's called a perfect storm? Well, I'm not sure this is a perfect storm, but it's a lot of events led to a very bad situation occasionally. It's way worse than last year Matthew. Last, Matthew's more wind damage than was flooding, I know there was some flooding, but this year we had more flooding than wind damage, it's almost reversed. We had a lot of water and fifteen to twenty inches rainfall. And I've checked, matter of fact, um, Kingsland Public Works, they measure sixteen inches. There's a USDA site in Woodbine that measures fifteen inches. There's a USGS site in ninety-five and, and Kingsland that measures sixteen and a half inches. So fifteen to twenty inches is an accurate number, it doesn't matter if it's fifteen or twenty. Say fifteen, we're still way beyond what we designed for. And I know, that does not help you folks that are losing things and just trying to make a point, we have a bad situation here. Really, really bad. And the city's dedicated to whatever they can do. I can't speak for the city, but I can speak for me, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to do whatever I have to as an engineer.
What did New Jersey do after Superstorm Sandy?
Pardon? Who's talking?
Compared it, compared it.
Would you stand up for me, I can't hear you.
Compared it to Superstorm Sandy, Sandy, you know? What did they do?
I, I don't know, I'm asking if this.
You did your research on it, you would have, I really like that, that question's a little pre-planned.
Yeah.
So what did they do afterwards that maybe we can pre-plan a man?
The only, the only pre-planning on this question was listening to a meteorologist today that said that Superstorm Sandy was a nor'easter with a storm surge and a tropical storm all at the same time. And I said, wow, that sounds an awful lot like Irma hitting Kingsland. That's the only pre-station, pre-plan. And that's why I'm asking if they had reviewed that to, to find a comparison. And I'm sorry about confusing.
We have not. I can guarantee that was not pre-planned. I have not heard that question before. And if you think that, I'm sorry, I have not heard Superstorm.
Sir, I got a question for you.
Oh, can you come over here?
Can't push. Right? The lady that sits there is my daughter. And I looked about fifty yards through two houses like I have for years. She was flooded up to here, my whole street, the rest of the streets all drained off. Now, that wasn't a ten or fifty or five hundred year drought. That was engineering failures and incompetence that led to that. And that should, to me, that's liability and it's a legal thing that anybody care of it.
Let me, let me say this, as, as people were talking, I was writing notes about different neighborhoods, which you had said. I don't know how the city wants to handle it, but if you have a specific issue, I would say get it to the city. It's, I don't know, some firsts or somebody needs to hear that. We, we were looking at it as we're going through the whole, the whole process. Pardon? I can't hear you, please, say it.
We've been doing it because the street and the two streets that these people all live on, Benmore, it was sunk like the bottom of a bathtub. And the water from ninety-five trapped by hull range and forty and a damn pipe on Rose Road goes through that sun. This year, it was just, maybe it was fifteen inches. Well, you can't build houses in an area like that. If you think it might be fifteen years, inches in five hundred years, which I think is ridiculous myself at, at that point. The water backed up, it couldn't get across Rose Road. And the mayor answered the question. It's because we, they weren't allowed to go in there and bring all that stuff off on, on the other side of Rose Road so that water could get through. And I don't think that the water could have gone through there anyway, if you say it's as much as it was. Because the pipe is too slow, too narrow. You can't drain all that water down to one point and expect it to go across the river.
I, I understand that, absolutely. I really do understand that. I guess, wh- where should these come in? Public Works? Your bill?
Yeah.
Or Ron? And if you have anything specific, please, please let it, Public Works, let it. And we're looking at all these drainage problems, which individually, we wanna make sure we take care of all that. Now.
But you were supposed to take care of it five years ago when you were gonna fly Rose Road.
I can't address that, all I can address is what we're doing tonight. Yes?
All right, we had two category five hurricanes in the country the first time this year. Now, let's say for example, we have two more next year, or one more next year, category five, the worst one. Does it change the threshold shift on your map to the left? As far as fifty years, a hundred years, two hundred years ago, you having more frequent hurricanes, which are more, uh, powerful, more range, you know, whatever? You know what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying. This chart is a nationwide chart based on NOAA. If NOAA decides to change it based on hurricane issues, that's something else. This is what we use in Kingsland, Georgia.
But they make that decision based, and that's, that's the base of that question.
Yeah, they're, I should, this is not a funny statement, but they're much smarter than we are. If they wanna change the chart, they'll change the chart, but it does not change anything in Kingsland, Georgia. We're still gonna use that design chart. That's what we use. And one thing, um, I mentioned this the other night, in, in Thursday, I thought. Excuse me. We hear the press say, we had a hundred year storm event or a five hundred year storm event. A hundred year storm event does not mean we're gonna be another hundred years from when we get there. All that means is, there's a one percent probability that the next storm will be a hundred year storm event. So we could have five storm events in a row. So don't ever think because we just had a five hundred year event, we're never gonna see it again. No. We can see it next week. What's the, what's the hurricane risk assessment on that?
Maria.
What if Maria came in here, if you do the same thing again?
So what is the city doing to address that? If that's the case, then is our stadium city managers, are y'all taking that into account? Like you're taking care of our budgets and our infrastructure and engineering? Because you're saying that, that's scary, but instead I'd like you to tell me what you're doing, just in case that does happen.
Yes, I get your words, sir, yes. We are looking every single drainage basin that has a problem, which actually is everyone in the city. We're looking at them based on these parameters to see what we can do to reduce the drainage problems if we have another storm. And I, I really hesitate to say this, I really do. I, I said it Thursday night, and I'm gonna say it again, I really hesitate to say this. And I know I'm saying it in, in front of people that really lost a lot. For real, I understand. I, I, I understand, I understand. So, let me, let me back up just one second, let me just sit back for one second. I have been involved in disaster relief for hurricanes for thirty years, I understand. I have not lost my home, like you. I don't know.
Right, so you can't speak for that part.
How about if I say, I hope you understand what you're going through? Is that's better?
You wanna go for a drive after this and go look at my house right now?
I've seen your house, I've seen your, I've been through it, I've been through it.
No, you have not been to our house.
I have not been to your house, I have been down your street, so I'm not, I'm not gonna be here in the, in a hostile environment, but I will tell you this. I have seen your neighborhood, I have seen neighborhoods in other cities and other events are just as bad. I will never compare Kingsland, Georgia to any other place. Not Houston, not Miami, not Charleston, South Carolina, not New Orleans. Because you guys are going through suffering right now. I don't need what you have, I think I'm applying that, please.
I know, I know the people in New Orleans during Katrina got it way worse than the general. They were on the roofs, we were not standing on the roofs waiting for, for the coast guard, but for our situation.
That's not the point, that's not the point. The point is that woman, you're working, but you still lost something. You lost a lot.
Yes.
We could have lost a lot.
I, I got that, I really have that.
That could have happened.
I forget where I was going with that conversation.
Did you prepare yourself or the city audience to avoid having this problem? Like you are talking about now, but later, and that Noah didn't give you the right thing?
I can't say that we will guarantee this won't happen again.
But can we prepare for something like that?
The conversation I was gonna have was, if we had that same storm come in next week, we're gonna have the same problems with Kingsland. Because we can't design that for that kind of storm event, we really can't.
You can't like design a system?
We can design a system.
For something that happened this year, not to happen again?
We will do, all we can do is design that way. We have to look at economics and a lot of other things. If we design right now to cover that storm event again, we will be coming back and asking for a tax increase to pay for it. When I say we, the city, I'm, I'm not speaking for the city, this just takes a lot of money to do that. It's an economic balance, that's why this, this turns like it is. And I'm not, again, I'm not gonna debate economics versus what you guys are going through. There's a certain point where you just can't design for a storm like that.
Not the point, you can design your drainage system correctly. Like I said, my daughter's house was line of sight, she flushed. I'm over here amongst all kinds of homes, we didn't flood. There was no choice for it.
The kids were playing baseball in People's Park the next day while we were swimming around.
Mayor, the, the mayor has a problem here, he's down the scoring. They didn't adjust for going across the street on, uh, that street that came through Rose Road. And all drains down there, it doesn't move across.
That's the first thing.
And you built houses down in there.
And those are the ones that, those, that area is one where it can't break a touch. For me to say we can solve the whole problem, I can't say that, we're looking into it, thanks for.
So, so you can allow people to, to build in those areas and say you're prepared to carry it over.
You, you know, this is the thing, planning. We all have to be planning for our future. I'm retired, not because I want to, because of my health. I have a house that I bought two years ago. I'm down to nothing. And it's tough. The only thing I saved in my house furniture wise was a living room that I bought two weeks ago. I used eight cans fifteen inches high to save it. But I didn't have enough cans to put everything in my house. And now, I don't have insurance. FEMA, they haven't said anything about it. Every time I get a paper, I had to go there, give it to them, make a copy. And I still haven't heard. A lady came to my lady's house. Did the inspection today. She said that. She said that she had twenty-five, well, firstly, she, she said twenty-five. When she was leaving, she said that was forty, that she had to visit today and tomorrow. His house, my house, was on the address of those two houses. I know you don't have anything to do with FEMA, but we still have our house and we cannot do anything with it.
Robbie, I'd like to ask you a question, maybe, I don't know if this, you know, has anything going on, but... From your expertise, is there anything that we can do to prevent anything like that? If that type of weather comes again, what, if, if there's anything that can be done to protect that?
Yes, we are looking at every single drainage basin in the city, particularly the ones that flooded, to see if there's anything we can do to eliminate that flood potential. And we, for the past, again, ten, twelve days, we've been talking, public works, city manager. We, we're gonna talk about this, we have a little staff. Drainage basins to review, to see what we can do. We have enough information, we got D I S information from the city, but I don't think we have to do a lot of survey information, things like that. But the point is, is, we, we are looking at every single basin. Can we solve every single problem? I can't guarantee that. I would not even suggest that. But we're gonna do the best we can to make it better in the future. Now, if you completely understand, city, late-line folks, you guys are just, I'm sorry, I understand.
What can we do, I mean, with an office, or a pool room, or a hot tub? Just anything that can tell, something like that, that you have?
We just, again, I don't know, again, we had the worst conditions we've had. We cut off the phone, and we had a high tide, we had storm surge, where nobody really knows where it was, I'm trying to do some research. Nobody knows it was three or six feet. So we had storm surge, we had a high tide, but the main thing in Kingsland was we had that rain flood. That's the main thing that we had also. So we, we work on those things. We can't solve high tide issues. We're, we're far enough off the, off the coast, we shouldn't have a major issue in most areas, Kingsland, that's your long river. So, I'm not sure I can answer your question, but yeah, we, we're looking at all of those things. We really are. There's a lot of urgency there too, so- Yes?
So what you're saying, what you're saying is, I'm a math teacher and I'm a retired engineer. You, you engineered to a one-hundred-year level, that's all you're gonna get. What I've heard is though, all these people suffer from lack of maintenance.
Yep.
Now, my question to you all up there is, do we have enough people to enroll? If you're gonna have a pay raise, if you're gonna have a tax hike, do we have enough people, like in the military, in the seventies when we didn't have enough people in there, and maintenance went down crapper, and our ships failed? So we increased pay, we made a volunteer service. I'm a newt, I'm telling you, if you don't have enough people to do the maintenance, we can sit here and talk all doggone day, okay? My question to you is, do you have enough people in public works to do all-f预备的 maintenance that you feel that will do absolutely the best effort to minimize this problem again?
No.
Well then fix it!
We'll try. Appreciate your comments, sir. But we, we will try, and I've stated that many times, we will try, we, we'll do the best that we can.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
By trying, we're not gonna do anything. We need to do it.
Trying, trying is what I mean, to put people in place.
You've been an engineer here for twenty years? And how can you keep your job?
Yes, yes. We did the work, we did the work, we really did, and I'm, anyway, clearly met the conversation. If you, I say, I'll give you my phone number, what if I, I'm sorry? I'll give you my phone number, I'll be like, I'll meet with you, come talk to you. Yes, I bet.
I don't live on that area anymore, I used to live on, my name's Lynn Stark, I live on two, three, four East Lilly Street. I used to live on Woodhaven Drive, I only stayed about three years because there was a, they called it a fifty-year rain. And I lived on the other end of the open, and that had started to flood in my garage. So I told my husband when he came out from the plane, that we need to get out of there. I had that feeling, that bad feeling that was really low, and I found out that was, those neighborhoods were a swamp. And they're low, and I really felt, I never should have went there in the first place, it's really egregious. But you're dealing with it now, chickens have come home to a roost. So I just, and I moved higher ground, I now live two blocks behind the emergency center. Praise God. But, I, I just wanna say, I think you gotta do all you can to help these people. Because they can't recover, if they walk away, their credit is tanked for years, they won't get that back. They're young families, I mean, it takes them many years to regain their credit if they just walk away and leave everything. So they're stuck, they can't sell their property, because like I said, who's gonna want it? But it's a flood zone, and that is, you know, they have to have full disclosure. And it's in this weird gray area, but nobody's gonna want it, they have to be honest with what has happened. I just wanna say, do your best, because this isn't right, this is not right. I mean, you know, it's one thing when it didn't happen to you, you move along. But I, I, it's odd, it is odd, isn't it, how this turned from raising the pay, the policemen, the fire department, into what's happening, but you see, that thing cleansed, and it brought things out. This has to be dealt with, it has to be dealt with, okay? And I, I don't begrudge them a raise, timing's pretty bad. And I just still don't understand why the county also collects property tax, cannot help in this area. So, purchase sponsors, and am I right in that, they don't help at all?
Phyllis, can you, I'm sorry, let me ask a quick question, I'm sorry. Phyllis, can you, is there any way we can have these individuals get some sort of waiver, or reappraisal on their property immediately? Can, can we have that done? Seems like we start there, and at least that can provide some relief right now. Even though it's, it's, there's much more we've gotta do, is that a possibility?
We can definitely look into it.
Give her the mic, give her the mic.
We can look into it, their value for the tax in two thousand seventeen, based on January first. And definitely the value that's gone down on some of its homes, but it's something that we can look at. Contact, I'll start with the county, contact F N C, if it can be adjusted. The county values, we'll see if we can get that on.
And you make sure we can, whatever we can, communicate to them, our needs, and people's needs, to get that reevaluated as soon as possible. Thank you, Phyllis. Fred, can you talk to us a little bit about some of the water, some of the issues?
Surely, um, yeah, obviously the same, there's some that, uh, have been said over and over, that, uh, it's just a horrible situation. And I do work, um, all over the state, servicing municipalities similar to Kingsland. Um, and I will say that the issues here, especially when we get to coastal Georgia, are, are not as rare as you would hope. Um, speaking specifically to the sewer system, I know there was some conversation earlier about, uh, what we call combined sewer systems, which is, which are prevalent in many cities, especially Atlanta, where you actually have storm systems that are tied into the sewer system. That is not the situation in Kingsland to our knowledge. Um, but what you do have is an aging sewer system, where storm water finds its way in, a high water table, you know, below groundwater, uh, gets, finds its way into the sewer system. And it, that is not a rare situation, uh, at, at all throughout the state. Unfortunately, most all of the systems that I deal with, all over the state, have the same exact issues as yours do. And the funding is tough, um, we do, we are working with the city on, um, several, uh, grant and loan combinations to be able to put money and invest back into the rehabilitation of these systems. But, um, as Robbie alluded to earlier, the expense is extraordinary. And the burden to the tax, uh, to the tax base is extraordinary. And so, um, I've been down in front of this council presenting options for rehabilitation, and as we have dug into what, what you might call the worst-case areas, where the most storm water is getting into the sewer system, um, you know, it just, the dollar doesn't stretch very far unfortunately, and rehabilitation's extremely expensive. So, this is a problem, I know that it doesn't help anything that you all are feeling, but, but, what I can speak on is the sewer system is, um, is, is also under, uh, under a lot of scrutiny right now, trying to figure out how to stretch the dollars for as much rehabilitation as we can do. But when the entire power grid goes down, uh, Kingsland is exceptionally flat, as you all know. And we have to utilize, you know, we're, we're trying to float everything by gravity as much as we can. We have to utilize pump stations here more than in the mountains, or up, up more in the foothills of the mountains, to move wastewater, you know, along the system and throughout the system, to the wastewater plant. And when we have a complete power grid failure, there's not, there's just nothing that can be done. I mean, there's nothing from an engineering perspective that can be done. And you're right, the, the low point of the system is the, is the, the worst case as far as sewage. But the entire system was shut down, and, um, it's, when it's flooding, it's gonna go somewhere. Unfortunately, it mixes with the floodwaters, you know, if I could give you the, uh, any, I'm not gonna go there, I was gonna say that it's exceptionally diluted at that point, um, but I know that doesn't give you any, uh, any good feeling, so. Yeah, no, I understand, I've been, I've, especially played in my own sewage before, and that is not something that I'm too happy about either, it's not naive. Any other questions?
So, Pat, I seem more hungry for a drink, if I'm talking. Um, so if it's storm water backing up in the sewage, because the system can't handle it, and it flooded our neighborhood, it's, you know, we're just kind of like, is it the neighborhood's fault? Is it flooded towards the city's fault?
Flooded the sewer or the storm?
Well, we're not quite sure, we're gonna be tested yet. So was it city back up with the storm water that caused the flood? Either way, um, just two streets flooded, so if it was storm surge water from the east door, and the sewage system couldn't handle all the intake, is it the residents of that neighborhood's fault that only those two streets flooded? So who is to compensate us? It couldn't be my fault that the sewage system couldn't handle it, so who's gonna pay for that?
I think your question is residents or infrastructure, type of thing?
If it's not built to handle it, and it floods our neighborhood, and we're not aware of the system's failures, why do I have to pay for my house to be rebuilt? And, and take away from the poor government and the police officers who deserve an increase right now, but the rest versus our strength, we can't make it. So whose fault? My question is, if the sewage system can't handle all the backup water, is it our fault, or is it a city problem, or whoever's supposed to maintain these things to keep them standard? From a scientific, engineering context, I mean, I just can't answer that.
Well, it's just not an engineering question, and, I mean, I don't wanna-
It's a legal question.
It's a philosophical, political, legal question.
For a term, okay.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's a, a legal question, because I don't typically send people out to correction, because that, that also seldom ends well, but the, to me, it's, um, it's, it's one of those things that's just a really bad situation. And I don't know that fault, from my naive perspective, that fault can be placed. And Robbie says it right, you've got what I would call an act of God-type of storm, meaning that it's beyond the practical design that, that anyone, any engineer could possibly design for. You know, we can't design for a tornado, and we can't design for a hurricane or a situation like this. Fundamentally, uh, we can't. And so it's, from an engineering, scientific perspective, I don't know that there's a pure fault here, it's just a, and, and, you know, that, that solves nothing for you, and I don't know how to, but it's just not, it's, it's not one of those things. Hopefully, somehow, someone can figure out a way to help you. I, I'm really hoping that FEMA is gonna come up with a, I, I'm really surprised to hear, from my naive perspective in the engineering world, I'm surprised to hear that FEMA is not coming to a battle a little bit more for you. And I hope, if there is something that I would encourage the city coming out of this meeting to do, is that, that there become a, a political push, and a push amongst this group here, to try to leverage anything we can, both from an engineering perspective, and I know quite a bit about grants as well, but, to, to try to get that, that, that's where this group can spend the best amount of time. Other, not talking about Lee, he's got his things to do with public works, but talking about from a political perspective, just try to figure out how to unify everyone, to get FEMA to pump a lot of money into this community, so.
Some people are here this morning, for another thing that we'd like to ask you, is how could you help us? And that's to get our realtors, the FEMA Jimmy, we need letters stating what happened, so we can get stuff right. So a lot of this has never happened before, so in order to help prove that they can change the, the processes, for FEMA coming in, and all that kind of stuff, we can say, based on this experience, this is what we need. Because a lot of times, things don't change until you give them a right, and a lot of people make a lot of noise. So again, as I said, we are with you, we will do what we can, I think we got some good strong candidates, and we can put something right, get a letter to the county, or a letter to FEMA, all those people, because they're, they're running like chickens as well, but we worry about county, county, we worry about Kingsland. So please, get with us, let's talk, let's see what we can do at the local level. But the FEMA, the insurance people, the realtors, they need to have disclosures about this flood and all this kind of stuff, so people know when they buy these houses, that it's, you know, they say it's not a flood zone, that has changed. And that needs to be written, and the, the paperwork need to reflect that it's a possible flood, or it has flooded in the past. Because somebody, they looked on, mind and Google something, house flooded five years ago. So as we get this information, let's put it together in a nice package, so we can go to the right people.
So which council members have had that committee, would like to receive letters?
I will help, will you help me? I will help.
So, it's the letters written, because they can't do everything for us, but we have to help ourselves. So if we get these letters written, and you hand deliver them, or hippos or councilmen are laying nice up there all day. Bring them to councilman's place, and let's turn them in, and let's make sure that FEMA hears us, and we can say, hey, we're not gonna leave our babies in sewage.
And let's get some ideas of what we expect, and this is what we're willing to see, communication is giving solutions. Real wisdom to this, we need you to do this.
Right, sure.
Thank you.
One of the old things that we will do is, amongst the council, I believe that there being support of us, pass a resolution, or whatever it takes, to set it up to our, uh, congressmen and senators. Before him, as needed, as I said earlier, I did get a call from our senator, uh, late this afternoon, wanting to know what could he do, I said, I don't know if he can, but we will be getting back to you. So hearing this from you all tonight, this is what we need to do, and I don't have a problem going to their office and sitting down and talking to them. But this meeting tonight, it shows a signal out as to what's going on, and they need to know about it. And we will make sure that they know what's going on out here. And with the FEMA coming in, and with the information that I heard tonight, it's not good. It is not good, I never expected that. I thought there would be more concern about the residents and the damage that's going on. But I did not expect this to come out of them, with them having been in here as long as they have. But we will definitely, starting tonight, I guess I could make some phone calls tonight. But we need something from this, this world forward, in writing, not talk. In writing, to state our concerns about the citizens in this county, and in the city. And we will do that. Uh, Lee, you'll help with London, get that grown up? And we will make that public, to show you all that we're not just talking. And as a matter of fact, I like seeing a lot coming down, because we need that help now. So with that, at this time, I'd like to call our public jury to close, and go into our regular meeting, and call our meetings of order at eight-thirty-four. And y'all have been here, so, you can welcome the same with the meeting if you'd like. And y'all have been here so, you're welcome, the same with the meeting if you'd like. Okay. Are we all done or what's?
No, they, no, that was just, oh, they can't, I can go into the regular.
I'm getting it.
I know you're.
At this time, we're going to call for our invocation of flags to flag at this time to get our meeting. So at this time, if we all stand, I'd like to bounce a hand to give us our invocation.
Ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for tonight, Lord, our hearts are heavy. There's a lot of decisions that have to be made, a lot of transactions. But we pray that you give us wisdom, how to work this out, but we need action. And we thank you that you're the person to go to, you can fix it, there's nothing too hard for you. Make us one, let us get this problem covered, let everybody work together as one. And we thank you in advance for the victory, in Jesus' name, Kingsland will survive and we will overcome. Amen.
Amen.
Welcome to the United States of America. And we are blessed for which it stands, one nation, one God, and we will deliver to the rest of all.
Thank you, let the record reflect on all members present tonight. The next item is our consent docket to approve the council medicine, the last right of council meeting, which is held on August twenty-eighth, twenty-sixth, and seventeen. Approve the gentleman who presented, approve the papers of accounts payable, let's do it, funds available, or any items for additional regulation. Not all promotion.
Motion. Second.
Motion by councilman Bays, second by councilman Winters, any open discussion? Not all for vote.
Winners, yes. And yes, it is.
Thank you. Next is a recognition of period. And at this time, we do have a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And it's one of the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting has been awarded to the city of Kingsland by Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for its comprehensive annual financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management. An award of financial reporting achievement has been awarded to the individual or individuals or department designated by the government as primarily responsible for preparing the award-winning document. The C A L R has been judged by impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate its financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the C A L R. And this Governor of Finance Officers Association is a professional association serving the needs of approximately nineteen thousand, twenty, and elected local, state, and provincial level governor officials. And so with that, our finance officer, Joe, can you come forward and accept this from the finance department? Let's give her and Phyllis a hand. And that's a rarity for governors to receive something like this, and they have did this for thirteen years. And without that, it's all go-forward and that's what we want the community to know, that what we're doing financially and for this group to come in here and go through the audit process as they do every year and wind up with achievement like this, I think it's a great thing to mention, and thank you all again. Need to get his speech at the podium.
It's a team effort, appreciate all the mayor, council, and all the partners.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Next is our presentation, Mr. Howes, chairman of the St. Mary's students.
He was here, but he had to leave.
Next is our presentation by Laurel Landings Property Owners Association.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Fox, so we tell, I live at three forty-three Laurel Landings Boulevard. I'm also the president of Property Owners Association. And we come before this grant as we support the new approval for a new access road for our development. As you're aware, we only have one lane, one way out of Laurel Landings right now. And with Hurricane Herman, we couldn't get out. You know, the road was completely blocked. We have four hundred and seventeen essential components in that development right now. And what we're asking for is not something that's really, you know, this was on the planning stages. Joining Laurel Landings was originally published years ago. But, and it also has at the time, a court of inferior approval, we must do. But obviously, things happen with the economy, it was never done, and there was, I'm getting to the court, no longer exists. But we have been in touch with the court of engineers. And you're the first people that we need to address and get your approval for this to do. As they, with her here, there was almost ninety-five percent of our residents couldn't even get in. And emergency services couldn't get in. And that, this is not being asked for or done, that would be needless to get someplace faster. This is a public situation that we're asking you to address. One of the most important things, I think, to let you people know is that if we're not here for our hands out, asking you to pay for this, we are going to pay for it. We and the builder are going to turn around and foot the approximately fifty thousand dollar cost to put this road stretch in. What we need is to rule the city, to rule the coordinators to do it. I have some maps that I brought to you to show you where it will come from and where it will go. The problem we have is it goes to Fairway Zedge, looking out on more Masters Web. And there's about, you know, Mr. Sword, the original developer of Laurel Landings, is going to build a lot to have the road come through. Road comes through and then it hits weapons. So I was going to give the court approval for that. The last fifty by fifty.